She's in here somewhere. Dot is still in there. We just haven't seen her, right?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Can you guys hear?
We can hear you. Actually, we can hear you well. I hope you can hear us well. How was the reception?
I, yeah, it's good. I'm glad you can hear me because I'm going to do all the talking. No, I'm just joking.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. Well, if we forget about you, I'll try not to, but if we do, just feel free to yell out. So, okay, I have 4:14 PM, July 19th, 2022. This is the Eagle Mountain City Council work session. So, we will start out as we usually do with administrator items. So, we'll turn time over to Paul Jerome.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, launch right into this. Start out with communications. Work on the revision to the city's mobile app and web interface for use of Rock Solid's One View is underway. It's anticipated that's going to take about 90 days for full implementation, and council and residents can expect to see that as part of the resident portal sometime around October. Initial concepts for upgrading the city's marketing plan are now in the works. The city council can expect to see an update later this year as plans progress. An update to the city's economic development page in coordination with research being done by Zion's Bank. In following city council comments for targeted economic development marketing is also underway. So, you can expect to see a change in that within the next 45 days or so. Public education around the city's efforts to encourage enforcement of traffic safety is expected to begin this next week. This is something we're going to do periodically to just try to encourage safety from drivers out there. Switching to facilities, fleet, and emergency management. The community development building equipment garage has the concrete floor finished, and B-Logic is working on the electrical. I'll notice that the city hall interior paint project is in progress. Right now, the administration area is the next on the docket. Actually, well, right now, it's the break room, too, so, but then they'll be switching to the administration area. Sewer facility office remodel is about 95%, 95% complete. I'm just waiting for countertops to be delivered. So, we appreciate the efforts from our internal team, especially on this. They've done amazing work over there. WW Clyde is installing sewer and the storm drain. They're also going to be working on subgrades on the southeast end of this area there in the sewer treatment plant. The UHF repeater is scheduled to be installed August 1st on the Utah County Tower at Unity Pass. So, it's exciting to have that. Switching to public utilities. The thing that we've all been wanting to hear is well one repair has been completed. The test, the water quality test was submitted this morning. And so, hopefully by tomorrow morning, we'll have a clean sample or a clean result and be able to put that into the city's system and keep it in there. I probably should knock on wood. So, keep it in the system. There we go.
There's wood right there.
So, work is continuing on the golf course well. It's anticipated that that will also be completed on the 25th, so Monday. And that would mean that we have basically more wells in service now than we have in the past three years, technically speaking. So, that's really good news. Matt will be very happy once all this is done. There was a water main break on Cedar Pass Road in Cedar Pass Ranch. They were not able to complete the repair last night due to a mechanical joint restraint failure, so the repair is underway right now. I do, I was told, though, that the residents do have water or have had water. They kind of did a temporary fix to be able to restore that when they said that they were going to get that restored. But our crews were there till the middle of the night last night. Actually, one had to stay on hand all night long to just watch it. So, we appreciate their efforts. Going to engineering, Longyear, the contractor that's going to be doing well number seven will be providing the city with a reduced proposal to decrease the size, the diameter size. I am told by Chris today, though, that even though we're going to decrease the diameter size, we actually will probably be able to get telemetry down that well. I know, I think I told you guys we weren't going to be able to. They believe it's possible. If not, we do have a monitoring well right next to it that we'll be able to put telemetry down that to monitor the well. So, we'll still be able to stay in compliance with DEQ on that. We expect to have bids for drilling of well number eight by the end of August. Well number eight will be down here next to well number one. Design is expected to wrap up next month on both Mid Valley and Old Airport Road, the next phases. So, that's exciting. That's part of that bond, that road bond that we got. Concrete is becoming slightly more available. So, Chris is hopeful that we'll be able to get that left turn lane lengthened from eastbound Pony Express to northbound Ranch's Parkway before school starts. So, fingers crossed on that. Switching to parks and recreation. The Walden Park Observatory had a kickoff meeting for the design of the building. During the design process, it's anticipated to have construction documents by the first of September, and the observatory should be built and operated by spring of next year. So, it's going to be an exciting addition to our parks in the city. Smith Ranch Park, staffs had some design meetings on the skate park and playground design. So, we're still anticipating having, finishing the designs in the next couple of weeks. Staff will update with items as they become available. With the bike park, staff's been doing some improvements to the drainage at the bike park. During quick heavy rain events, water runs off the bike park, floods the street nearby, and it funnels to a kind of a cul-de-sac that terminates near that. So, staff's worked to control the flow of the water and monitor how much water is actually draining off the site. There's been a retention pond installed to hold water and to measure the volume during these events. And when the final plan is in place to fix the issue, staff will update us further on that. With community development, 100 residential building permits were issued in June. And Steve is going to actually update year-end data, I think, in the next item here in the meeting. So, we won't get to that. They've also issued a certificate of occupancy for available storage. So, that is it for my updates. So, any questions, I'm happy to.
Any questions for Paul at this point?
I just have one, and you may or may not know the answer to this, Paul, and I apologize in advance for not asking this earlier.
It's all right.
I'm just curious if we have an update on the permit from UDOT for the secondary access into the development there in White Hills. Do you know anything about that, what the status of it is?
I know.
Maybe Steve could answer that better.
Yeah, Steve, do you have an update on that?
Do you have an update on that at all, Steve?
Not sure if I know more or Chris knows more, but we've been working with the developer and the fire marshal with UFA. So, the basics that I know is that the access, so they don't have UDOT approval for that. The lineup, the lining of the access as well, the alignment of it in relation to the street across the street, across the highway is not direct, so it's a little bit of a safety hazard there. So, the fire marshal worked with the developer and with us and closed off. I believe they're closing off the access with a gate if they haven't already.
That's correct.
And Fire Marshal is okay with that being an emergency access only. So, they'll have a knock box, a lock box there for them to be able to access it. But until that, yeah, until that access goes in or the deceleration lane, it's just not safe. Any other?
I think that sums it up. They'll keep it gated right now, so it won't be in use. So, it won't be a danger until they start doing more development in that area. And then they'll get a permit through UDOT and line it up and do the acceleration, deceleration lanes and.
So, the building is still occurring there, but just CBOs are not being issued? Is that still the case?
That was the plan before we worked out with the Fire Marshal, that he is okay with that being an emergency access only. And he's still okay with building continuing and occupancy continuing as long as they have that access where he can get in, he meaning the fire department, can get in and access it if needed.
Is the plan to try and bring, is the plan, though, to try and bring that alignment to where we'd like to see it? To continue, we're about to get that permitted. Is that kind of where it's at? Or do you know? Maybe you don't know.
I'm not sure that it completely hurt.
I guess what I'm asking is, I understand that it's temporary access. Makes sense with a knock box on there so the Fire Marshal can get in there whenever he needs to. That makes sense. Just wondering, is that just a temporary road that's in there through the construction phase? And at some point, that's going to go away anyway?
It's not going to go away. It's going to be, but it's going to be more fully improved in time.
But yes, that could shift. The alignment could shift. When it becomes a permanent road, it will shift to a line.
That's what I was trying to understand. I appreciate the.
Yeah, the short section between 73 and kind of that first front of the road will.
So, it'll stay status quo currently until that gets kind of worked out. I guess that's still being worked on. Okay.
So, for clarification, we are, unless we hear otherwise, we're planning on continuing to issue building permits and occupancy in that small subdivision around White Hills, according to Fire Marshal's.
That's the 20 lot subdivision.
It's a 20 lot subdivision. I can't tell. I could look, but I'm not sure how many are occupied yet. There's not very many. But they're not building like a standard subdivision where you're just building all of them all at once.
What will the total number of lots over there be? And are we, I'm sorry, Kobe, and are we going to kind of be beyond that 30 where we have a singular access?
Yes, and that gets to my question. I just want to make sure that that's.
Kobe, I'll be quiet for a minute.
No, I just want to make sure that that's consistent with the council approval because I don't think it was just the fire access. I don't know off the top of my head, and so can we just check on that to make sure?
We did look at that to make sure because we didn't want to move forward issuing permits and occupancy if that was clearly a second access for the subdivision and not just an emergency access. And it, from what I recall, it wasn't specific. Obviously, the intent is to have another access in there and out of there. And this was a specific requirement by the Fire Marshal is why it's there. But yes, normally, we would have a second access, two access points for anything above 30 lots.
But when that second access raises safety concerns, now you've got to catch 22.
Right. And he was, the developer was well aware that he needed to build a road before moving forward. So, I don't know. Maybe I'm just.
So, where are you going with that, Kobe?
I just want, I don't feel like, I feel like there's been a lot of leeway on this to begin with to allow that to be developed. And the biggest condition was that, no, you need to have the road. So, I don't think it's unreasonable to make sure that the road is built.
So, the downside, if I may, the downside right now to just stopping development or occupancy is that they've sold a lot of those lots. And so, it's a different builder, a different home buyer building those. So, we felt like it was probably better for the situation to continue to let them build, give occupancies to those that have already started and are in process, but while they work this out. But yes, at some point, if they don't get UDOT permission and they don't continue to get that deceleration lane and make it safe, then I don't know if that point is, maybe you tell me, but is that point after the 20 lots? Or is it in the middle of the 20 lots and at some point we just stop?
And I want to be very clear. I think that you're operating under a very reasonable understanding of how to best balance when someone's bought a home and then they can't live in it until, you know, the city holds, and that's one thing. I guess, yeah, it's probably just an aside that the developer never wanted to build that road to begin with. And so, I think that this was a potential, anyway, I find that frustrating, but.
We do, too.
I wasn't looking to open a can of worms. I just wanted to understand. I've had several of the residents from White Hills reach out to me, and they're just curious about the update and where it's at. And I know I've talked with you, Mr. Mumford, about that, and you've been open with me and very, very helpful, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
The residents have also contacted me, at least one resident. And mostly, their concern was the safety aspect, making sure that's closed off until it's safe. And that's absolutely what we want as well.
All right. Steve, did you have anything else to add, or we?
Not to that.
Okay. Well, and I should mention, it's time to, we have Councilmember Burnham online, and Councilmember Gray will be joining us later. So, I failed to mention that earlier. Okay, then, I guess, Steve, we're back to you then for growth and development update.
Okay. On the little screen? It's just all black, so I'm not sure. I can plug in over there if I need to. Am I up there? Oh, it's definitely not showing here.
Or on my screen.
While they're working, if I could request a copy of this to come to council, I would love to be able to review this.
Hard copy or electronic?
Electronic is fine.
Okay. All right. Steve, can we, can we do that afterwards, provide this presentation to each council member so they can review it?
Okay. And Councilmember Burnham can let me know if I'm not speaking loud enough so she can hear.
In fact, let me go and check in with her. Councilmember Burnham, do you have any questions at this point on anything? Are you?
No, I can, I can hear. I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to see the presentation very well. We'll see. But I can hear you fine.
Okay. And then, yeah, Steve will send that presentation out to everyone. So, anything, you know, that you need to review, it'll be made available to you.
Definitely. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so the plan is to do an update on our last fiscal year worth of growth and then move into vested units citywide and what that means for the future. So, this last fiscal year, we issued 1,440 new residential building permits. So, you can see the growth there since 2014, not the growth, but the number of building permits, residential permits each year. Definitely less than last year, but the second highest ever in the history of the city. But we are seeing, just from this number here and discussions with home builders in the area, that there is definitely, we are at the beginning of a decline of some sort. It's hard to know and hard to tell what that means, but home sales have definitely slowed, and builders are, quite a few builders are doing spec homes only. Other issues are popping up as well. But, but that doesn't mean entitlement work will slow down. So, entitlement work is in getting their projects approved, purchasing land, all of that will continue to move forward. This is the breakdown of north versus south areas for our new residential permits. You can see a change in the last several years from the red, which is the south area, and blue is the north. So, we're now experiencing a swap, and most of the growth is occurring in the south service area versus the north, where just four, five years ago, it was exactly the opposite. And then you can see, this is just the number. So, it goes back a little further from 2014, but you see the number of permits in each area and how that's shifted. And feel free, if I go too fast or you need more time on a slide, I'm happy to go back. This is just fiscal year 2022. 74% of the permits were single-family detached units. 26% were multifamily of some sort.
Is that permits or units?
Both, the same, yes. Yes, we issue a permit per unit here. Yep.
Steve?
Yeah.
Do you recall, I seem to think that generally, we've been about 15 or 19, 15 up to maybe 19% on multifamily. Is that correct? Or am I?
On an annual basis.
Yeah. Or maybe overall, maybe I'm thinking overall is 15.
The overall numbers, I'll show you in a bit, but this is a little higher on the multifamily side this year. And I don't know if that's a combination of the affordability crisis in the state, and they moved more towards multifamily. I think some of it was just that some of the multifamily projects really got going just this last year or the year before, the end of the year before. So, Eagle Point Town Homes, for instance, D.R. Horton started moving on those where they sat for a long time. I'm sure I can think of some others, but Silver Lake Town Homes and that development, they were just continuing through. So, yeah, I think it's been a little less. It's been more 80/20 in that area. But I'll give you some more numbers in a bit. Okay, these are the high-growth projects in the north area this last year. So, obviously, Silver Lake continues to be the highest in the north. That will change after this year. New Park is right around the Ridley's area. It's that single-family detached development to the east, northeast of Ridley's. And then you have several others. The south area, quite a few projects that were big builders this year. Brandon Park continued. I think the year before, it was the highest as well. There you go. Eagle Point Town Homes, Overland, Harmony. Generally, so Brandon Park, Harmony, Overland, those were, those were all single-family detached homes. So, you get Eagle Point Town Homes, multifamily, some in Brightly Farms. Yeah, that's about it as far as multifamily in the south. So, I think it's kind of spread out, but mainly that Eagle Point Town Homes project. This is just month by month. You can see the number of permits there. The high months are interesting. High months, December, February, March, January. Usually, we do see a little bit of a drop later in the summer or kind of midsummer in new permits because they're continuing to build and finish the permits they issued earlier in the year. So, the growth rate citywide was 11% just in permits. And 6.2% in the north, 20.3% in the south. But you can see there, the population distribution currently is 63% in the north, 37% in the south, based on permit numbers only.
Do you happen to know, or could you look for us if you have the information? I'm just curious about applications, right? So, getting ahead of the actual builds and saying, you know, during, I feel like, I think it's been three meetings and we haven't really seen applications, and that's, you know, thank you, thank you.
Makes our meetings faster.
Right, right. But I'm just curious to see how that all fits together, right? So, you know, during which months we generally get them. Obviously, you can't answer that right now, but something maybe to consider at some point.
And then just to note, a couple of slides on commercial projects. We don't have to go through all of these, but we issued a lot of commercial building permits in this last fiscal year. And a lot of those were new retail buildings or tenant improvements inside multi-tenant retail buildings. So, there's a big list. I'll give you time or I can go back to it. And then, open for business. I'm hoping I got all of them right on here. Aaron can correct me if he sees anything that's missing. But quite a few new businesses that opened or were issued an occupancy permit in this last fiscal year.
I think you missed Maverick. I've not seen him.
Maverick, we just issued in July, so.
Oh, this is, oh, this is.
This ends in June.
Things are moving too fast. Okay, you're right.
That's right. So, we already had several since that happened. And we listed Facebook, Meta, and Tyson on there because there's, especially Facebook, there's always various projects going on there. And a lot of those are some of their contractor buildings or temporary buildings, but we still do permits for them, and it's a lot of work and a lot of projects going on there. But the main ones are Buildings 1 and 2 that opened up this last year. And Building 3, I believe, the first part of Building 3 is, will be ready for occupancy in the next couple of weeks. Okay, any questions on anything we just went over for the fiscal year? Okay, now the good stuff. Let me start by saying I apologize this took so long. We've been working on it. It's been a project that because we don't have a really good software that tracks all of our applications like a lot of other cities have, that's been used and in process. We had to do pretty much all of this manually, and it was a lot of work that, due to staffing issues, meaning low staff numbers, it got pushed down and other projects became a priority. And so, I know this has been a priority for you, and I apologize it's taken so long. But here we go. I'll give you what we have, and then you may have questions and items to address on that as well. So, just a few assumptions and notes at the beginning. Some of the master development plans do, some are more specific and some are more general. And so, we did have to make assumptions and our best estimates on what types of units and what sizes of units would be developed in those. I had a couple of my staff do that first, and then I went in and also reviewed and made changes. And so, I'm sure you will see something as you look at the raw data, if you want to see that later, that may need to change on the assumptions. But we did use our best guess and judgment to determine the anticipated units in some of those master plans. Some units were not included. So, some of the multifamily units shown in Harmony, in Circle 5 Ranch, those are listed as not vested in the same way that the single-family were. For instance, the Harmony multifamily units, the zoning is in place, and it does allow for multifamily, but the number of units is not vested. So, as they come in for proposals, you're able to review that according to our current code and make determinations there. And I think you've seen that Circle 5 Ranch is very similar, but not vested as well. Eagle Quest East, you did approve the master plan with the MDA. The agreement is not yet approved. We're working on that. I included the numbers from the master plan because you did approve that. And then, it's a given that quite a few of these will change. They will come in and ask for amendments, especially the large ones. As you can see with some of these, Pole Canyon, of course, we're going through that right now. Porter's Crossing Town Center as well. Clearview Estates is one that's on the north side of the highway that they sold almost half that project to the school district. So, they will come in and make changes to that. Upper Hidden Valley, I fully expect changes because that's so far out in development from when it was approved that the market will change multiple times by the time they really get into that. And then we will have some new master plans in the future as well that we'll have to consider. So, you don't need to dive into all of this data because I'll summarize it. But we took each area, so this is the north area, and determined, okay, when does, so you can see a list of master development plans there on the left. And then, at the bottom is everything that has been approved in a preliminary or final plat that is not within one of the master plans listed there, except the ranch, it does show the ranches there as expired. Those units are all included in that bottom category. But everything else is either in one of those master plans or in that bottom category. So, you have the year that the vesting expires or the agreement expires, whether that project has been preliminarily platted or partially, and then final plats as well. So, if the project has fully. So if the project has fully final platted, it's done, it says yes there, I believe. And done as in all of the final plats have been approved and um recorded or under construction. And then total units vested or approved, so the max density approved with those. Single, how much of, how many of those were single family? The single family units that have been platted? And then the single family units remaining. So of those, single family units vested, how many have been platted and final plats and how many are remaining to be, to be platted still? And then multifamily units that are vested in those projects and the same thing, the ones that have been final platted and, or approved in the site plan and the others that uh remain, the units that remain. So what can I, what can I go through this? Did you have any, did you have a question?
Yes, single, I, I just know the single family units remaining. For Upper Hidden Valley, it says nineteen fifty-eight.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So Upper Hidden Valley hasn't been developed at all, so all of the vested single family units are still remaining to be built or to.
I was thinking that line on the bottom was a total. That line on the bottom is not.
No, sorry.
I had it, yes, I had it uh in gray because the master development plan's title was in gray, but it probably should be.
No, that's the total only for upper, upper, is there, is there a total on this page?
No, I do have totals.
Okay, all right.
So that bottom one is everything else. So all existing, so not all built, but you can see there total vested units on the bottom is five thousand four hundred and forty-five. Of those, forty-one ninety-six are single family units and of those, nearly all of them. Oops, I keep clicking the button here.
And that's, that's everything else. So this, this list is these specific developments and, and then everything else is at the bottom.
Just, just in the north though.
Huh?
Right? Because I'm sure you've got another one.
This is north, this is north, yes.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so looking at the north, this just gives you a little, a little better picture. This is just vested units, approved in master plans as max density or in the preliminary and final plats. So the north has that five thousand four hundred and forty-five. The next highest is the Upper Hidden Valley area. Silver Lake, Lower Hidden Valley. Now, some of these, Silver Lake, for instance, I'll, I'll look into it to be sure, but um some of these projects are approved with a max density that's higher than they actually build and develop. And so what we originally wanted to show here as well was how many of those units are left still on the table that they didn't build and we're not there yet. Um we started that, so we have that for a few of them, but, but not all of them. Um it started clouding the data too much, what we were trying to, trying to give you the raw data. Uh so yes, you can see Upper Hidden Valley, Lower Hidden Valley are still quite a few, for, quite a few units, forty-three, forty-four hundred units that are master planned there to be built, um that haven't been, haven't been built yet. Which we just got a concept plan for the Lower Hidden Valley for most of that area. So they're thinking about it and uh starting the process. Okay, and then the, the south area, same thing, all of the master plans listed. And then the bottom category is everything that's all, that's separate from those or within an expired master development plan or agreement. So you can see the big outlier there is the Pole Canyon project. And uh so forty-nine hundred units, forty-nine hundred and five in the south, um outside of the master plans compared to, what was it in the north, fifty-four, forty-five? So still, you know, we're only five hundred or so less than the north um as far as total vested units. Sorry, total uh vested outside of master plans. But this will give you that visual picture. Pole Canyon is a huge area, of course, but in and of itself is another, another small city. So uh there's that. In the south up there, Overland is thirty-eight hundred units maximum. Harmony, that's the single family units in Harmony, so there will be multifamily units, but there's no density attached to that. And then you can see Parkway Fields are all farms at the bottom and the rest are quite a bit smaller. Any questions on any of that before we move? Okay. This goes to Colby's question, the platted units, so these are just the platted units that have been final platted. Everything that's been recorded as a final plat or approved as a final plat. Eighty-four percent of those are single family, sixteen percent multifamily. That's our current distribution, not currently built, but current distribution of what's been platted. This data is a couple of years old, but it, but it shows, you know, the first thought is, well, how does that compare to other cities in the area? Couple of years old, so Lehigh was shown as eighty-four percent single family, sixteen multifamily. I think that's probably shifting a bit due to a lot of their multifamily that's being developed along Twenty-One Hundred North and in that Thanksgiving Point area. South Jordan, seventy, thirty. Saint George was at sixty-nine, thirty-one. Sandy City at, at seventy-three, twenty-seven. And then you get into a little more dense cities, Orem, Provo, Salt Lake, just to, to show you for comparison sake. And then some of you have seen this a couple of years ago as well, but, but these are mainly large cities, but cities around the country. And just for perspective, so the green is single family detached. Everything else is multifamily. But blue, the light blue is more of a townhouse that's row house, single unit attached, it says, but it's row homes. And the rest are either, either townhomes or condos or apartments. I think the darker the color, well, the darker as you go to the right, the dark blue is the twenty-plus units. So there, I, I mean, you can kind of look and see on the left there, Philadelphia seems to be the most dense city as far as multifamily in the country, and New York close behind. But as you kind of go down there, maybe there's a city on either side that you think, hey, that's, I like that city, or that's a great city, or I don't like that city. And you can, you can try to think of why and it's probably, it's probably not related to what's shown on this graph, but there are plenty of reasons why a city is, is desirable and not desirable. And maybe some of that has to do with this graph and maybe not. So I'll leave that to your, for your interpretation.
The blue is like RVs or something? Oh, sorry, the pink, the light pink?
The pink is, yeah, it looks like uh mobile homes, RVs, boats, you know, some people live on boats.
Okay.
In the city still, in the city. That boat percentage is probably pretty small, but. Uh but you can see down on the bottom right, you know, some of the least dense of the list. Oklahoma City, Fort Worth, El Paso, Detroit, that was surprising to me. A lot of single family homes in Detroit, I guess. Louisville, San Antonio, Albuquerque. I, I look at this list and see um, you know, I lived, I lived in Las Vegas for a while. I wasn't actually in Las Vegas, it was nearby, but um we were in apartments there. There were a lot of apartments, but there are a lot of single family homes there as well. There's definitely pros and cons to that city. Indianapolis, I see and, and I hear a lot about Indianapolis being a really livable, desirable city. I have a, and I hear that from multiple sources, but my brother lives close by as well in West Lafayette and they just love going to Indianapolis. But that doesn't, doesn't necessarily, like I said, doesn't necessarily mean, oh, because that's a predominantly single family detached city, then that's why they go there. It's, it's, has more to do, I think, with the design of the public spaces, the culture, the um climate, the, all sorts of other things, right? This is just for perspective is all information. Okay, the breakdown for platted units in our city, sixty-five percent, that, and I know you're going to want more than this, but this is, these are the categories we have for now. Single family detached, under a quarter acre is the yellow. Quarter to one acre is blue, that light blue. And then one plus acre is green. And the multifamily, you can see condos, apartments, red, townhomes, orange, and then duplex or twin homes as, as the one percent gray. So currently, all of those units we have platted, that's that, uh what was our number, eighty-four percent single family? And so of that eighty-four percent single family, there's the breakdown, sixty-five percent, fourteen and five. So that's everything platted. And here's just another way to look at it there on the graph, but, but that's a total of seventeen thousand and eighty units platted. At our current household size, based on the census estimate, it's of four point four three, that's seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-four people. So if we finished building out everything that was platted, it's about seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-four people. And I can look just after this and see, I think I have a, a good sense of how many vacant, how many of those are vacant still and not built on? I don't have that in the same massive spreadsheet that I have in a different one. But I think we know, based on our estimates and our numbers, that we're already above fifty thousand in population and we're likely closer to fifty-five to sixty. So anyway, yes.
You have more than double our population vested but not built.
Vested but not built?
Yes.
Yep, that's next. And I'm just providing information, I'm not trying to scare anyone, so let's just give that upfront. The vested and unplatted units that, that Councilmember Curtis just referred to, seventy-nine percent of those are single family detached, twenty-one percent are, are multifamily. So a little, little different, not a lot, but a little different ratio. You can see there's a little more multifamily than, than single family uh than our current ratio.
So Steve, I, I just want to be clear, make sure that I understand it. So, so thi- thi- this is a different category. Apart from what we just went through, now we've switched gears and we're moving into those that are vested but are unplatted.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm tracking.
There's going to be more buckets, right? Likely, or that they have like a, a max, but may not build that max?
Yes, correct. So I'll scare you with the max numbers, but they may not build it. Um that's one of the caveats to this. So these are all of the units that don't exist yet, they aren't built, they aren't even platted in final plats, but they have an approval in a master plan or in a preliminary plan.
Developer has a right to bring forward and plat these.
Yes.
Should he choose? I mean, I recognize that they're going to be different. I, I recognize that.
Things will change a little bit, but in general, this is what we're looking at based on the approvals.
Super helpful.
So you can see there's not a drastic change and we're not, you know, these large projects that, that we've approved aren't bringing in a huge multifamily contingent or uh something very different than what we have now. It changes slightly. Um and then we have the combined numbers in a bit that you'll see. So of those, the same category, very similar numbers. So it's a little higher on the, on the blue category and the townhomes. Slightly lower on the yellow and the green. Looks like duplex twin home is a little higher as well, but very similar. This is the same data just shown in the bar graph. And then here's your number, Councilmember Curtis.
So that's one seventy-five plus fifty-five. So when Councilmember Wright joked about two hundred and fifty thousand, he was not far off. No, when, when he said, yeah, he wasn't joking.
It's one seventy-five, it's seventy-five plus.
That's right, so this is a hundred thousand plus the previous number we saw, which was seventy-five.
Plus our fifty-five?
Seventy-five includes the existing population.
Okay.
But there will be, we'll talk about more land outside of what we've approved already.
Sir, you lost me a little bit there. So we had, on the vested units, we estimated seventy-five additional.
So this is, so the platted, platted units include all of our existing built homes as well.
So that's what exists plus what hasn't been built that is platted?
So I'll, I'll make edits to the presentation to make that clear before I send it out. Existing, built and platted, however I want to say that, it makes sense, but seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-four includes our current population and any lot that's been recorded or approved in a final plat but not built on yet.
And I guess you combine those because it's imminent that they'll be built and.
Yes, potentially. I mean, we had some that, that, you know, an example, a bad example is uh Eagle Point D and E, which are on the kind of southeast side of Eagle Point subdivision, south of uh Eagle Mountain Boulevard. Those were platted and recorded over fifteen years ago. Eighteen years ago, something like that, never built until just recently. So there are some outliers like that, but a majority of the time, the developers don't want to pay for the taxes that come with the platted subdivision that's recorded. So you want to start building. Some of that had to do with market fluctuations, of course, but um generally, we will see developers, when they, when they get a plat approved, they go through the construction drawings, they start constructing and they never record the plat until right before they're ready to build the homes. And so, I shouldn't say never, often that's what they do. It's standard practice. So they don't have to post a bond for the full amount of infrastructure. They build as much of the infrastructure as they can, record the plat, post a bond for the remaining amount plus the warranty amount and then start building homes. Okay, so that's seventy-five thousand plus hundred thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four as the maximum, the maximum allowed.
You said, you said plus, but you meant, did you mean total or? Oh, no, it says additional, additional.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's considering, you know, Pole Canyon's nine thousand something plus Upper Hidden Valley, Lower Hidden Valley, Harmony, all of those.
And, and that, that, that does make an assumption. I think it's important to recognize, it makes an assumption that, that our household size is going to remain at four point four three.
That's right.
Right?
Using our current household size.
That's all relative, that's all we can use and it makes sense.
Right, that's population, but units remain the same though too.
Sure.
So it could be a lower population, but it's still the same amount of units.
Generally, what you see is a reduction in household size as you grow. We saw an increase this last time, um but I, I'm not sure that will sustain for very long. Eventually, we will see that household size start to reduce a bit.
Do you happen to know what the number is for the state of Utah?
Uh state of Utah, I don't know. The Utah County previously was three point five nine, that was a while back.
So we're slightly higher than.
In the whole United States, the whole world for crying out loud is going down.
That's right.
We're just going down a little bit slower than everybody else in Utah County.
And we, we are higher than most, obviously for, for cultural reasons here, but also because we are predominantly single family. And so all the families move out here and buy first-time homes. And, well, it's not always first-time homes, of course, because that's generally a small family. And, but they stay here over time. Um I think part of that is our low multifamily unit count. We don't have, I mean, we have, I think, zero, some are under construction, but zero one-bedroom apartment or townhome units, right? We have some right now under construction.
So Steve, Aaron just passed this along, it's three point oh eight for Utah as a whole.
I knew Aaron would know that, so. I kind of looked, Aaron, answer that question.
That might be like two for Salt Lake County though, you know, like skewing the mean.
So much higher than Utah in general, um higher than Utah County in general. And we'll probably stay higher for quite a while, but.
I'm going to chalk it up to desirability, that's what I'm going to chalk it up to.
Right.
Well, well, I also, I also feel like these bigger families are willing to come out a little bit further and have a little bit longer commute to get, because in the past, we have been, you know, a tick down in price than, than other surrounding areas. And I feel like people with the larger families have been willing to come out a little bit further, get a little bit more for their buck.
That's right, and we've seen as prices continue to increase, maybe they're dropping. That's right, and we've seen as prices continue to increase, maybe they're dropping now, but as prices are higher than ever, you don't see just the first-time homebuyers coming out, but you see even millionaires coming out and building here, or up in that level, the higher tier, um, income, because they can get more land, they can get a larger house for, for less, or the same amount. Okay, you ready for the total? Total of both of those categories together. The total distribution now drops us down a little bit, but to 81% single-family, 19% multifamily. And distribution stays pretty much the same, very, very similar.
This is total platted and unplatted, right?
Platted and vested, unplatted, yep. Everything approved, everything that's been approved is here.
I, I'm just joking, but now think about accessory dwelling units.
Oh, and I did think about that actually.
Oh, okay, like, because imagine how many more we could potentially have because of the state law, right?
That's right. I thought about that, and I looked at it, and we don't have, uh, we don't have a huge number that are legally approved right now in our system. So, uh, 250 plus is what we have legally approved. I don't know how many have just been done without going through permitting process, but I would assume it's very similar to that number.
And I would assume that that number's going to go up, just if affordability goes down, you're going to get more and more of those, but it's not really something we control, I'm just curious about the information, so.
And that's, that's interesting, because we can start tracking that information, and I don't know if you track it as a multifamily unit or a, a single-family unit, but we'll track it separately as ADUs likely and.
Well, that's where it gets interesting, it's with the ERUs and services, right? That's be- because it's kind of running a little bit under the radar.
Right.
Right.
Right, there's an impact, but you don't, you don't necessarily, especially if they're not getting permitted, you're not going to get any of those impact fees, you're not going to get.
Right, an impact that we can't collect impact fees on.
On ADUs anyway.
But there are arguments, there are of course arguments across the board on both sides of what is that impact really? And while there are, uh, some ADU situations where it's an older couple that all the kids have left, and now they're renting out the basement, and they have about the same number that they had before. And there are others now that we're seeing where brand-new homes are being built with ADUs finished.
Right.
And so young families or whoever moves in can then rent out to another family.
Well, is that, you, you're saying, is that the argument from the legislature?
No, from city, just, I've heard other cities in talking to planners around the state, especially in the county, they all believe, I mean, they have different views on it.
Right.
So some, some have strong views that, hey, they have a larger impact than a family would.
All those kids are going to be going to parks, they should pay park impact fees, all of it, right, they're causing us that a little more, right?
There are others that, there are others that strongly convinced that, that, no, they're mainly renting to either, you know, two adults or a s- very small family with a very young child, and so the impact is very low. It's across the board. I mean, we may have, we may have some that are two full families in there, and some that are less people in both units than they had when they had all their kids in the house.
And, and you could have borders, I mean, we're not even talking borders. But it seems to me that if you have, you know, the house that was designed to be a single-family house, and then finished as an ADU, that it should hold the same amount of people that it did originally. When you start talking about a separate detached ADU, you definitely have an impact.
Now, I think what we're seeing, and we will see more of, as if prices stay similar to what they are, is families moving back to live at home, right, in the basement, in a finished ADU possibly, but instead of buying their own home, they'll wait longer until they can afford it, and in the meantime, stay at home.
And I think there's definitely an impact on that, I mean, my utility bill every month says, hey, you're using a lot more utilities than your neighbors, and I can say there's a reason for that. You know, because it's multifamily home.
Well, but then there's the age-old question of, of O and M versus the build, but there's, I think, an argument to be made, if you have a whole bunch more people using the system, you're going to have to rebuild it.
There's, there's an impact.
There is an impact on the rebuild at some point that.
Well, that's Chris's problem as far as.
Well, and a lot of these things are just kind of like, how do you measure, how do you measure impact? And that's probably the age-old battle between cities and developers anyway, is how do you measure impact?
Okay, here's the, here's the scary numbers. Over on the bottom right, 176,429 people, that's just the 100,000 plus the 75 that we talked about earlier.
When I made my estimate, it was 30,000, so we're, we're up 39, but I didn't get them all when I did it.
Well, and it's interesting to see that 30, you know, 39,826 estimated units, right, that's 40,000 units. And of those, we have currently plus or minus 13,000 built. That, that's a rough number, um, I don't know how accurate that is, so don't quote me on that, but.
I have that exact number, but not up here, so.
Okay, but somewhere in that range, 12, 13,000 units, so, I mean, just think about that.
And I mean, even looking at some, like, look at Silver Lake, which is like 2,300.
Existing today, there's about 12 to 13,000 units that are built throughout the city, residential units. Uh, that, don't, I, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a loose estimate, but when you recognize that we're 12 or 13,000 built, that leaves us 28,000, uh, you know.
If you build 1,500 a year, which is really high, how many years until you get?
A lot, sounds like a story problem.
Sounds like math I don't want to do. Some years.
So you can see the breakdown there as well, it's very, it looks dramatic, but it's, again, the very similar percentage of what we currently are, which is about 63% in that under a quarter acre, then the blue, quarter to one, was, what was it here, 15%? Okay, um, now, just for perspective, when you have that 176,000 number in mind, this is the north area. I covered up everything as much as, as, as well as I could in a quick fashion, everything that's been approved or platted or vested. So everything in color there is still either, the green is mainly open space, unbuildable or open space property. So you can kind of, you can kind of forget about that for the most part and focus, and, and pink, pink is commercial, red is commercial, the blue at the top there, blue-gray is industrial or business park, and then the bright blue, light blue is Employment Center Campus. However, we know that some of that may be developed in residential, it depends on the uses that go there, if there's a, for instance, if there's a college or a, a school of some sort, or trade school or something, you may want housing units within that, you know, within walking distance of that college. So there may be additional multifamily units in that area, but then you can see the yellow and other areas that are slated, at least in our current general plan for residential, single-family residential mainly. And then that purple area is more of a, a town center, downtown mixed-use area, potentially. So that's the, that's the north, the south. You can see, obviously, there's a lot of green, but the, the residential areas are the east bench mainly, that Foothill Residential, rural density one, rural density two, and then some area in between Pole Canyon and the current city center area, um, in between Harmony and Pole Canyon, that's, could be residential with some commercial and industrial. So there really aren't a lot of areas left in the city that aren't planned, at least preserved in our plan for industrial or business park or Employment Center Campus, uh, except for the more, uh, some of the more larger lot areas. And I think part of that is because services aren't down there yet, and it's just starting to get, to get up to that point, but some of it is just because the market has demanded generally smaller lots or, um, or multifamily, and so sometimes those properties that are slated for large lots don't get developed as quickly. So my estimates are that our city's approximately 52 square miles. Vested is approximately 30 square miles remaining, we have about 22 square miles remaining. That's, that's unvested, un, without, um, an approval. And, you know, something else to consider, are there future annexations that may happen as part of the city? We've indicated areas on that map that, in case annexations are considered, what we would look at for land uses, but, and most of those are, again, business park, Employment Center Campus. But that's just, uh, information for you, so my, a few observations that I made, you don't have to make these same observations, you can take whatever you want from this. Uh, single-family detached homes are still the most desirable type of housing unit in the city. That's clear from the approvals that we have. Now, that may change over time, but I see that that's still in place. Affordability, attainability is key, there's a high demand for homes on small standard lots, that's almost always been the case, and I think will continue to be the case, especially if prices remain high and it's hard to purchase a home or, or afford a home. I believe we should continue to focus on economic development, commercial and industrial growth, to subsidize the ongoing cost of providing services to single-family homes. We know, based on, uh, studies and research that's been done by others, that single-family homes do not pay for themselves in general, there are outliers to that, but single-family homes cost more to service generally than, um, they bring in in tax value, in tax revenue. And so if single-family detached homes are still the most desirable type of housing unit, and the small lots are more desirable, I guess it doesn't matter the size of lot, no matter the size of lot, or low-density multifamily, then obviously we need, um, economic development to help us provide services and continue to provide services for those. The 19% multifamily units, that was the 19% overall that are multifamily, should be located in areas to maximize their benefits and reduce their impacts. And when I say walkable, I just mean near commercial areas, near, near, uh, parks, near services, so you don't have to all drive if necessary, uh, near major roads and intersections, so the traffic from those units doesn't impact, um, other neighborhoods, and then near future bus or transit stations if, if those exist. And then growth will continue, it may slow, it may increase, it may slow again, it may increase. We should focus mainly on livability of neighborhoods, which to me is access to trails and parks and services, traffic calming, pedestrian safety in neighborhoods, convenient and safe roads and routes to business centers and destinations, and, uh, transportation options, which, uh, you can expand that as far as you want, or, or shrink it down to, uh, as small as you want, but bike trails, bike lanes, um, buses and cars as a, at a basic level. If you want to go beyond that, it's transit, it's something else, um, drones, it's whatever comes out, that's flying vehicles, no. And then I think it's crucial to preserve usable open space for recreation and wildlife now while we can, because when we have 176,000 people, it will be hard to then purchase open space, and so as part of that, you know, planning now for the necessities of the higher population, which obviously is water and utility needs, it's major roads and connectivity, it is, I believe, busing and future transit options, it's public safety needs, future regional parks. Are there opportunities now or in the near future to preserve and plan for what we'll need when we build out or get closer to that, that number? Okay, we talked a lot. Any, and I know you have, you asked great questions and had good discussion, but Mayor, any?
Okay, let's start with Councilmember Burnham. She's a little bit of disadvantage, but, uh, uh, Councilmember Burnham, do you have questions for Steve at this point?
Um, I don't really have questions, I, I, I do think the information is, is really interesting, because there was a lot of fear going into this and, and, um, people very concerned that we were going to have significantly higher multifamily, and so it was interesting to see that those numbers are still very similar, which I'm grateful for, I think, um, th- that shows consistency with the city, so, um, that, that was what I was hoping to see, and I'm grateful that that's what played out.
Thank you, Councilmember Burnham, uh, anyone else?
I, I need to do, analyze more before I can really give any thoughts.
There's a lot to analyze.
Right, I mean, I, obviously, I, I, I know what my goals are, and they may or may not be popular.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, I, I think we have a lot of units, I, I, I think one of the things that I've said before is, is maybe we need to have a, have a vision or a focus on trying to get vested units built, because they're just out there in the ether, and we're, you know, we, we've had a lot of newer developments added to this in, in the last couple of years, and I, I think if we want to use some of that multifamily, it makes sense to find these people who are invested, partner with them and say, you're the one that has the tier system residential units, you're the best candidate to make this area that Councilmember Curtis really doesn't like, but is an essential part of a, a city, rather than, you know, saying, let's vest a new developer to, to build this higher-density, walkable downtown-type area. I, I think it makes sense to use the vested units that we have, especially under the old tier system, where they have much more flexibility in that system, that we wouldn't need to grant them or wouldn't desire to grant them maybe under our newer system. But then we can still accomplish the goals.
Now, I, I don't think, I, I don't recall, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but were you able to identify vested units with utilities, uh, infrastructure of any kind, as, as, uh, separate from those with utilities?
Meaning infrastructure in the ground?
Yes, like water, sewer, power.
Most of, most of the platted units have, have utilities to them.
Yeah, on, on the, on the unplatted, I, I, I just, I don't know. Uh, are, are there any of the unplatteds that, that have utilities, or, or is it safe to assume that the majority of them do not?
I think a majority, a majority of the platted ones do, and the unplatted vested generally do not. They may have major offsite infrastructure improved, but there may have been, I'll have to look closely, but there may be a few subdivisions, for instance, in the platted that are not yet recorded, but they're really close because they're under development, and so they're putting in infrastructure right now, and so I just included them in the platted, so we wouldn't have to go back and, and modify that very quickly. So yes, there is a small number.
So the reason I ask, I mean, it's kind of, uh, tagging on to your, uh, statement, um, i- is, uh, yeah, just a question, is, is that part of the reason they haven't built yet? I mean, certainly there are market factors which we can't control, but, but is, is, is part of it the lack of infrastructure, perhaps?
You're saying maybe we can't, some, some of those multifamily units that are vested may not be possible right now, right? Because they're too far away from infrastructure.
Right, but, but I think we're always making decisions that, that make that more plausible, depending on how we vest properties or how we make decisions. For example, you know, we've talked about SR3 extending down south, immediately that makes it possible to have 9,500 units in Pole Canyon, so we just need to understand the consequences of what we're doing, or the, the, the benefits, e- and both, right, because you're going to have pros and cons of everything that you do in that type of a, uh, right, so if, if we want to get X done, then we do Y, that's what I'm arguing for, I'm saying, now, now that we've got data, let's keep on. I'm saying, now, now that we've got data, let's keep on this data and say, "Well, where do we want to go? What is our goal?" That's, that's why I've always wanted the data, so that we can make those decisions every time we vest a new development, or every time we make decisions, we know where we're at and where we're looking to go.
Let's, Councilmember? I mean, first and foremost, I just want to thank you, Steve, and your staff. I recognize this is a Herculean lift. And, and, and we've had many conversations about this over a period of time, and I, for one, want to just express my gratitude for the energy and effort that you've put, put forward in bringing this to us. I find it to be extremely interesting, somewhat different than what I expected in some ways, and very helpful in, in evaluating the decisions that we're asked to make. And I, and I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Curtis. I, I think what I'm hearing him say is, "Look, if we have these vested units and we know that we're going to deal with some of these densities, maybe we can open up some of the outlying area that is developer homes." And, I don't know what the right word is, but coalesce it or bring it around an area, an infrastructure area where we'd like to see maybe that become a little more target.
If you really want to do a node, then we partner with them to move their bajillion units to one area, and then we actually get more desirable single-family lots that are why people come out here, based on the data.
Rather than creating additional nodes of high-density infrastructure, take that that exists.
Correct.
Well, it's actually where they're less desirable, right?
Exactly, right.
So, I think that this will really open up our ability, I think, to see a little further into the future. I mean, a hundred and seventy-five thousand people does not surprise me. That number is not surprising to me. And I just want to know, from my perspective, and my goal is to have as much data as I can have to make as informed a decision as I can to try and move towards an outcome that we, not me, not Councilmember Curtis, not Mayor Westmoreland, but we as a council and as a staff can, can kind of come to a point where we're, we're working together towards an outcome that we're all looking to create, even if there's nuances in that outcome. Thank you.
Well, one of the things that came out of this for me is I strongly think Steve needs a vacation.
He has to take Mac with him if he's going, okay? Because all that water stuff that Mac, Mac gets to go.
Mac and I have the same birthday, so we can vacation together, too. It's fine.
And I agree, thank, thank you for doing this, it's been very helpful to me. And, yeah, and I, I do agree that there's maybe a little bit less. I've always been reluctant to vest new multifamily. And, you know, that, that's probably part of the reason that we haven't gone up, if I would make an ar- argument, but at the same time, it's, it's not as bad as, as maybe I would have expected, so that's positive for me.
Well, the nice thing, too, is this is going to unfold over time. This is, yeah, we're not, like, this is not happening tomorrow, but it's, it's... The nice thing, it's up there, we can see it, right? And...
I'm supr- I'm frankly surprised at the area of the city that's already vested. Or, it may be unplatted and it's not defined yet, but there's vesting there. You know, the fifty-two square miles to have twenty-two left? And most of that falls in the areas in the city that we've kind of designated more as industrial or light manufacturing and, you know, regional commercial. When you start to see that, there's, I mean, i- i- if all of this plays out, as we look at that, one of the things that did surprise me is that there's fewer areas where residential vesting is possible in the city than what I frankly anticipated.
Yeah, this is fascinating stuff. Uh, we need to wrap it up. Councilmember Love, any, we'll give you the last word.
Yeah, I like to say we have a blank slate, and, you know, I'm just going to strike that from my vocabulary, because we don't have a blank slate. I mean, we've got a lot of vesting, we've got a lot of things going on. But, um, I'm trying to not have a panic attack here. When we talk about, when we look at the transportation plan, I believe this is a transportation plan going way out. Um, we have, we have one road. We have one road to take all those people out of town, and, and that's SR seventy-three. And the people that are going to be using SR seventy-three are everyone in the north, everyone in the south, and, and a decent chunk of the ranches are going to take SR seventy-three and, and try and use that to get out of town. So, my next question is, um, how many trips can the finished SR seventy-three plan, um, handle getting to Mountain View Corridor or getting onto twenty-one hundred to go to I fifteen? How many trips can that little, that one road handle? And how many trips do we think that we're going to have at a hundred and seventy-five thousand people? Because, um, that, that to me is the, the, the problem. Well, I mean, we've got all the utilities, but we've got to make sure that we have a handle on, but we also have to have a handle on the roads. And I, I would be very surprised if that road is going to, to do the trick.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And that's, and Mayor, that's something that Chris, when he brings the master transportation plan, can, can talk to as well.
Oh, do you have capacities? It's, uh, really six lanes each way.
Not off the top of my head. You're talking about seventy-three when it's built out? Let me see what I can find, if I can find something really quick. I mean, a freeway is usually generally fifty thousand plus ADT. And then with our lower-capacity roads, they, of course, go down from there. We usually look at roughly ten ADT per, per home, so, um, what were you looking at, a hundred and...
And that's a daily, that's a daily number, right?
That's a daily number, yeah.
Peak hour?
Peak hours, really, is the problem. And I, you know, I don't know, I don't usually drive ten different places in a day from my house, but usually stops her along the way and back home, so... But if you've got a family, obviously, my wife goes to work, too. And if we had kids or whatever, they would, you know, they start to drive. You have school, you have everything else, so...
Definitely a lot to think about.
So, so that's three hundred and ninety-five? Okay, so I took a hundred and seventy-five thousand units divided by four point three to get the number of homes. And I didn't write down that number. Well, yeah, it's thirty-nine thousand five hundred times ten trips a day, three hundred and ninety-five thousand trips.
And not all of those trips are on the freeway?
Not all those trips are on the freeway. But if, well, we got to figure out what portion of those we think will be on SR seventy-three, because that only handles fifty thousand or basically an eighth, an eighth of those trips.
So, luckily, you don't have to do all the detailed analysis of that, because we, we hire HOREX engineers and others to do the traffic modeling with software that tries to figure all that out. So, I think we can get some data with the master transportation plan to be able to show you what they calculate based on that traffic model. And they use, they use the growth projections from MAG, from the state, which, um, I'll have to remind myself what those are and look them up, just to make sure they're consistent with this.
Was that the plan that was emailed out to us, or is this coming, upcoming?
If that's what my office...
That was emailed?
All right, I think that's a great segue into our next topic.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, let's, uh, let's run through our consent agenda. And item number nine A is lobbyist services agreement. And we have Mr. David Stewart here with us. And, uh, I, I'm pretty sure that everyone would like to meet him, so... Is that all right, Paul?
Yeah.
David, could you come up and introduce yourself?
But, I mean, you want to, I guess, introduce myself? So, David Stewart, uh, I've been a lobbyist, pretty much at the state level. I've been doing this for twenty-two years, represent a bunch of different companies, as well as some local municipalities, local governments. Kind of specialize, honestly, in that area, and in transportation funding, and infrastructure funding, and water development, those types of things are kind of, I guess I would say, my specialty, but kind of range, again, I refer to as a contract lobbyist, so I represent, I would say, a bunch of different entities versus just a singular entity. Yeah, that's a quick, I mean, I can go into more detail or talk or, you know, but probably the easiest thing, if you have questions and stuff for me, or whatever, be the easiest to, to kind of go through, I'm sure, as, you know, a lot of people always have misconceptions or misunderstandings to some degree of lobbyists, or maybe don't understand. But I think one of the key things I bring is the relationships at the state legislature. I mean, Eagle Mountain, uh, obviously, has a couple of their own representatives, as well as a state senator, uh, through rig districting, that's gotten tweaked a little bit, and you guys have some new ones. But, um, part of the problems in higher-growth areas, especially as you get carved up at different times, and so you don't really have, or haven't had previously, you know, a big enough nexus to really drive that, um, individual's attention. And, and at times, you're kind of at the mercy of whoever they are, as far as them trying to push a specific agenda or trying to advocate for, you know, what the seat, what the needs of the city. And, you know, Eagle Mountain being as fast and growing a city as you are, obviously have very unique needs compared to, I mean, the League of Cities does a great job, and they represent all sit, all two-hundred-and-fifty-ish type cities across the state, and all those different issues. But when you have different cities that have different issues for different reasons, yours, I would see more as high-growth. And they don't get into specific infrastructure or funding or things like that, that's more on a city-by-city level. And, you know, a lot of Utah County, as of late, doesn't have a ton of representation and, and leadership itself that are advocating, or even those that are, haven't really delved into the infrastructure area too much, as far as, you know, advocating for specific projects and things in, in communities. And so I think, honestly, one of the values that, that I could bring is that. And specifically, that I met with, I know the mayor and, uh, Mr. Jerome, was to talk about water infrastructure. So, for those of you aware, and it was a program that I actually kind of helped set up, last summer, there was a fund that was set aside of fifty million dollars at the state level from ARPA funds, that they wanted to leverage local dollars around the state to, for projects, for infrastructure-type projects. The thinking was to use those dollars as a matching to local dollars. I think some of their fear was that some municipalities would use, would use the money more to supplement, uh, at the time, remember COVID and everything else, but general fund budgets and things like that, where they were hoping that these types of projects would be more infrastructure-focused. So, that thought was, kind of put some seed money out there to try incentivize that. Well, the program was way oversubscribed. There was a billion dollars' worth of submissions from the state to match against fifty million dollars. Through that project, I represented a handful of entities, and all the entities I represented were, got their projects funded to some degree or another. But there were different awards awarded from, you know, about a hundred thousand dollars up to, I think, four or five million dollars. And that didn't go very far and got spent. This last session, the program was tweaked a few, a little bit, and was reduced down to only now water projects, as well as some housing. Uh, it was given another twenty-five million dollars that will be put out to a similar type of a matching kind of a grant program, uh, in August. And as I was visiting on some other issues, but again, with the mayor and Mr. Jerome, I raised, I thought, as I looked through, I saw Eagle Mountain had applied for a couple of different ones and, and wasn't able to get those grants, and thought that with my relationships and expertise there, that I could certainly help the city. In the short term, it's something like that, as well as in longer term, in looking at infrastructure. One of the ways I kind of got involved or in some of these discussions is one of my clients is MAG, the Mountain Land Association of Governments. So, I work with them, focused on transportation needs from a broader, kind of through the whole area, uh, on kind of bigger types of things and initiatives, um, for MAG. And then specifically, uh, helped, this last session helped Spanish Fork City get some, uh, funding for a rail consolidation. They have some spur lines that, uh, as a, one of the, the proposed off-ramp that's going down there was going to have to go over like three different spurs, it was going to cost a bunch of money, and these aren't utilized. So, was able to get, uh, funding in place to basically buy from Union Pacific those spur lines, so they can get rid of them and avoid the huge expense that it will be to bridge over all those, because they split up their community. And then, um, also did some work with Hoover City, uh, on the last round of the ARPA fund, on a water project that they had in their city. So, that, I guess, for me, not to just keep talking and talking, that's kind of, I guess, a quick thumbnail, but happy to, happy to be here and to answer any questions, or anything more you just want to know about me, or what I can do, or questions.
Uh, David, is there anything that you can tell us that would give us a, uh, a better handle on, you know, what a lobbyist does, like what?
Sure.
How does that work?
So, what, what I have and develop year-round, year in and year out over the last like twenty-two years, is build relationships with different legislators as they, you know, through working on campaigns and helping them, and just working, because I have clients and interface and interact, and so I have those relationships, I have their, I like to believe anyway, their trust and stuff, because we work hand-in-hand. And, and what I've found in this business is it's, your integrity is everything. And so, the moment you're, you're not honest or equitable, then you don't last very long in this business, because they, as you guys are certain elected officials, don't ever want to look back, don't want to be hung out to dry or a part of something that doesn't make sense or doesn't benefit the state or their constituents. And so, whether it be a private company or a local municipality, I get engaged. Uh, one thing that some people think, and I wish I could do this, would be to work on a contingency, where I say, "Hey, if I get you, you know, X amount of dollars for a project, then I get a percent of that." State law concludes any contingency or success-based type lobbying, it's a fixed retainer, that you, you know, with any particular client would sit down, "Okay, here's, you know, here's what the retainer would look like, here's what our scope of services we're looking for and we need." And match those up, compare those up. So, then I, then work closely with whoever the client designates as the point person through, you know, through report back on progress. You know, we've laid out through our scope of what it is, and goals, in your case, of the city, and how at a state level can help. I would see one of those being, you know, even as simple as relationship building. I, I think there's, broadly speaking, across the legislature, a lack of understanding of what Eagle Mountain has grown into, as, and as I sat here, what Eagle Mountain is going to grow into. Um, I think most people would still view you honestly as, well, you know, maybe there's twenty thousand out there, thirty at most, you know, I, I think you would, you talk to a hundred and four legislators, there would be three or four that would put you north of that. And so I think part of it's just been, I don't think there's been the message there. I think as, um, so again, to not get too off-awkward questions. So, what I do then is work closely with, and what's important is, we, as you probably are well aware, we have a forty-five-day legislature. It starts mid-January, ends first week of March, so it's pretty intense. Because of that, there's an active interim. They have monthly meetings, there are national conferences where legislators go, kind of like you guys have, I'm sure, your National League-type meetings, where they go and share ideas, things like that. And this is the active time where, you know, a lot of people think that it's only, is really happening during the legislature. By the time the legislature rolls around, a lot of the key stuff, especially the budgets, are already built. And, you know, they're not largely public or have been approved, but as far as broad discussions about where they want to go, what types of things they want to fund, and things like that have already largely happened. So, kind of starting in the summer through the fall is really the critical time, as you're working through what's going to happen in the session. Because too often, you can show up with a great idea or a great concept, but if you haven't vetted it and worked it through and developed champions and kind of put together some sort of a path forward, the likelihood of success goes way down, because it's much easier to say, "Well, let's wait a year. Somehow, we survived the last ten years without doing this, we can wait another year, because it's just not ready yet, because of that short timeframe." So, what I do is, is basically bring those relationships, the understanding of the process, being there, you know, not only recognizing what the city's goals are and what you're trying to obtain, but as well as, as I better, and that's why I think my niche in local government as well, is I'm in a lot of the different meetings and the ideas and, and things that are going on, and help develop, like this last ARPA program, programs that I see, the, some of the cities I represent, would be, would be advantageous for and be helpful to. And so, it's kind of a proactive thing that I also work on to develop those types of ideas. And then again, work through, develop the idea, work through with key legislators, members of leadership and stuff, to advance that agenda, to advance those ideas, whether it be a bill or a policy, or a funding mechanism through the appropriation process. And then work that through the signature of the governor, and then if there's relevant departments that administer, uh, whatever that is, whether it be UDOT, or if there was a housing issue, or GOYO, or things like that, but then work through those different angles to actually implement whatever it is that was executed at a legislative level. So, basically, I'm kind of, I get hired for my expertise and relationships to kind of be, because, you know, Mr. Jerome or anybody else doesn't have, you know, they've got a bunch of, you know, a bunch of other things, so the professional service I bring is kind of that, that expertise in that. Something like I said, I do full-time, you know, and have done for twenty-two years. And I think my first city client was about eighteen years ago. And so, then, in the municipal world, which is a unique world, as you well know, but certainly in the state as well.
I, I've got a couple more questions for you, if that's okay. Uh, so you mentioned, like, you know, as we all know, legislative session doesn't start until next year. Can you, and you touched on this just a little bit, but I want to make sure that, uh, that, that we hit it, is, can you describe, even though that's happening next year, can you give us a little bit of a snapshot of what's happening with the legislature right now?
Sure. So, right now, you obviously have, I mean... So right now, you obviously have, I mean, a broader thing that doesn't, you know, you've had the whole abortion issue, and there's talk of, you know, is there needed to be a special session to address our trigger law, is that, you know, it's in state, and so there's things like that, so they start debating that. Key members of legislative leadership in different meetings I've had with them recently, they, as I'm sure, probably several of you are aware, or likely believe, that we're currently in a recession right now. Now, you don't officially know you're in a recession until two consecutive quarters, and so they won't know that we're in a recession until legislative session comes. But as they are starting to plan, and they close out this last fiscal year, and they start to get their final numbers for last year, there will be additional one-time money, that they certainly had growth beyond projections. And they believe, as they start projecting to this next year, that there will continue to still be additional money. But the legislature takes a very conservative approach, that we believe that it will slow down, and hopefully the recession, assuming we are in one, isn't a long one, but they will be very conservative in spending that new ongoing money on ongoing-type programs, because the likelihood that, that that money is real and stays for the next three to five, ten years, isn't very strong. And so, what they're doing right now, they start having discussions, all right, what's going to be kind of our planning, is where, I mean, this year's a little bit unique, because it's an election year, and so that dominates everybody's schedule up through June, until primaries are done, and then kind of, everybody goes on vacation, and then, and not so much in Utah, because there's not that many competitive seats when it comes to the fall, really, the real election is in the primaries, but there's still a few, but you start to, then you have the national conferences, and that's where you get large groups of legislators back at these meetings that start, and they have a lot of free time, so they start sitting around and think, you know, you know, through this interim, they've been starting to draft bills, and they have monthly meetings where they're talking about all different policy items that they want to start to advance. And if you want a policy item to advance, it takes, you want to take it through that interim process, and get a committee to review it, and, you know, get its blessing, or support, or work out the key to the interest of parties, because when you show up, you know, just with a fresh idea, and you haven't brought along all interested parties, it's a lot harder to get that, that bill through. And so that, as you asked, what they're doing now, is those types of things, now that the fiscal year's ended, they start, at least members of leadership start talking broadly in budgets, what, what are we going to try and do this next year? We're going to, how, what kind of a WPU do we want to target for education? All right? And one of the big things that they're discussing right now, as I was in a couple of meetings, is with this likely one-time money, what do we want to do with that? And one of the prevailing things is, well, let's continue to do some more infrastructure, that, you know, we're never going to regret that we spent money on roads, water, or other types of infrastructure. And, and the nice part about that is, if, you know, heaven forbid, it's a, it's more severe recession, those types of things, you can always claw back some of the money to, to address needs if you have to, there's not an ongoing commitment, or jobs, or things like that, that you can't pull back from. And so, what they're starting to do right now is start having those discussions, all right, how much money, you know, and they kind of deal in big blocks, all right, if we take, you know, X hundred million off for this kind of an idea, that kind of an idea, you know, let's do some water development. That's kind of what happened the last year about this time, as we talked about doing water metering, where we put a couple hundred million dollars, we talked about ag water optimization, we also did some for the Great Salt Lake, and a bunch of those types of ideas are, start happening during the summer, and they start to percolate, and start to build momentum and consensus, and that's, those are the types of things that actually make it through the legislature. So what they're doing right now is having those discussions, mostly among leadership for the most part, as they're kind of figuring out, in the fall, they'll then have broader caucus meetings, where they'll then present to their caucus members, and say, look, we've met with the House and the Senate, the governor's office, here's kind of the laundry list of things we see coming, that are major, beyond what, you know, all the little things that each individual legislator is working on individually, but here's some of the bigger-picture items that you're going to see this session, let's start having a dialogue about those, how do we advance those, what do we, as a caucus, want to champion, and to, to support, and to work through. This last year, another big one was housing, trying to deal, as it has been for several years, affordable housing, how do we incentivize it, how do we incentivize it the right way? And work through some of those types of issues, as well as, education's always dominant, you know, mental health-type things have always been, in the last few years, a very big part of it as well. So that's kind of what they're doing right now, is when the fiscal year closes, and they start to get an idea of how much extra money they have one time, as well as what they see for the next six months, and then they put together, the governor proposes his budget at the end of the year, and they kind of go from there.
Okay, well, thank you for that. So, one more question from me, and then definitely want to turn time over, but can you describe to us typically what your reporting to your client looks like, or what the, what could be, kind of just, kind of gives what, what might be the expectations of, of reporting?
Yeah, no, and that's, you know, honestly, it's really more up to the client, and how much, and how often, and what it is, and somewhat driven also by the period of time that you're in. So, obviously during session, there's a lot more regular reporting, because things are happening, votes are happening, committees, things, appropriations are working their way through their process and things, so there's more active reporting than you get sometimes, obviously in the summer and things, and things that there's not as much to report. And so it's really, I sit down with each new client, and each, honestly, client year to year, because one year's different to the next, and depending on how proactive an agenda there is that year, what it is we're doing, it's kind of, okay, how often do you need to hear from me, what is it you need to hear, and how, you know, let's set up the strategy of how we're going to execute what we've identified as our proactive issue. So here's, you know, the key people we need to meet with, here's the timeframes, we're doing that, and then kind of work backwards from there, of how do we best want to execute that, what, what's comfortable, you know. Honestly, some clients are like, look, I don't, you know, I don't want to hear from you unless there's a problem, so I, you know, trust, go do it, and you have, you know, coordinate with me for meetings, and others are, hey, I want to, you know, because I'm accountable to others, and so I want to be able to report back, look, you know, here's where we're at, you know, we've been, we were tasked with trying to pursue this, and so here's, you know, and obviously, there's some parts of your strategy, you want to keep fairly confidential, but, you know, as far as broad kind of metrics and things like that, it's really honestly up to, you know, each individual client, how they best need to manage them, their internal, whether it be a corporation or a city, you know, their own internal staff, and among themselves, electeds, to best, you know, whatever works best for them. And so it's kind of, really, it's not a one-size-fits-all, there, it's really adaptable to whatever the need is, to be successful, and make sure everybody feels comfortable, and like, you know, that work's being done, and that it's not, you know, because the one, the good and the bad is, at the end of the day, you, you know, you hope that they're certainly on appropriation-type things, there is obviously a deliverable, you know, whether you get money or not. And along the ways, it's, you know, it's not as tangible as easy, as like a building project, for instance, it's very easy to see the progress, okay, I can see every step we are in the finished product. In my world, it's much more of, you know, there's a hurry-up-and-wait, and let's meet, and let's, you know, kind of develop this, and we're on the path, we're on the path, and then it'll die, and then, okay, now it's resurrected, now we're back, we're back, you know, and, and so you go through that process, and so as much as that's helpful and is needed, that's communicated, but it is, it's a little bit at times harder to, you know, it's not quite as concrete as other things, but, you know, again, that's really more up to the individual client.
Okay, thank you, we're getting a little out of time, so I'm going to turn time over. Councilmember Curtis, we'll just...
Yeah, so, I can answer one of my questions. Thank you for being here, first of all, appreciate you coming to talk with us. One of my questions was, so, so this past session, we, we were targeted by a legislator in Davis County, they didn't like one of our building codes, and so, do you, do you lobby for policy or local control, those types of things, and what does that look like? For example, if we have a position, or we have a code, and, and someone's looking to target us, how would you approach that?
Yeah, great question. A perfect example is, so Park City's a client that I've done work with for quite a few years, actually, I got hired when the, for those of you, MIDA, which is the Military Installation Development Authority, you're probably aware, just because they were the ones that did the NSA building, they helped kind of facilitate that, they're a military kind of liaison for the state. Well, they want to put a military hotel up in Summit County for, a recreation hotel for military personnel to be able to use, and they, at the time, were going to trump local zoning, and just basically spot-zone it, and just plop it right on the entrance into Park City. I got hired to basically stop it, and work through, and did that. And so, through working, again, with my relationships, found alternatives, and it's, you know, gone different ways, there's actually now finally, crazy, it's been fourteen years almost, they're actually going to build one, but it's now one that the local community agrees with and facilitated. This last year, the reason I ran Park City is, I do work with them, and then I was helping Heber on this ARPA thing, and a, another type of a zoning, inclusionary zoning came up, and there's only two entities, two cities in the state that use inclusionary zoning, Park City and Heber City. And the Home Builders Association wanted to get rid of that, because they're afraid it's going to spread everywhere, and all kinds of, you know, mayhem's going to happen. So, I worked, again, with key members of leadership to explain, again, why that tool is critical for those jurisdictions, and if it's, you know, if it's broader than that, and it doesn't work, then that's fine, but there's ways to work around, to carve out, to address. And a lot of those, and that's where, candidly, somebody like myself can be very helpful, when you get somebody that's just targeting because they have, you know, one anecdotal story, or one bad experience, and one set of fact patterns, and they try to apply that, and, you know, and it, it unfortunately does happen, because you get, you know, somebody, the right person that's mad enough, it's, you know, pretty hard to stop them. But generally speaking, when the dust settles, and, and, you know, the beauty of having both, you know, the House and the Senate, is it's pretty hard to stop something in the body of origin, especially if it's a strong Republican sponsor, but the other body tends to be a little more deliberate, and, okay, let's take a deep breath, and look at the facts, and, and figure out, is there a way to address whatever the concern is, without gutting the local control, or the ability for a city to function in that, in the capacity that they need to, that they're being screened at by their, their constituents that they want. And so, there's that constant, you know, and to be honest, there's some times where, you know, there's a tidal wave of, you know, the legislature's going to go, but usually that's pretty broad, across all cities, and there's a big fight, and compromises reach, but, but there are, every session, a handful of one-off type of issues that really only affect a handful of cities, that, you know, the League tries to weigh in on, but they're usually dealing with those tidal wave ones. And so, no, I, you know, those are just two examples. Another one that I do a lot of work with is Salt Lake City. I really only do two things for them, I represent the airport, so it, there's always people trying to, the state's always trying to take over the airport from the city, and they're going to manage it, do it better, and so there's always that kind of fight, and pushing back. And then, I work on billboards, because they have so many billboards, so I'm always battling with Reagan Outdoor Advertising and others over, and that certainly impacts a handful of cities, and all cities to some degree, but certain cities even more than others. So, yeah, I, I get involved quite a bit on policy, and what that looks like, it's just me meeting with the sponsor, as well as key members of leadership, to bottle up, hold, you know, amend, defeat, whatever I can, you know, do, and put it through the process. And generally speaking, it's, you know, I am able to, to accomplish those. And, and a lot of the cities I talked about, Park City or Salt Lake, they're unique in that they have no Republican representation at all, so they don't even have a person they can call that's in the room, that's making these decisions. You know, as much as, you know, everybody has a vote, there's obviously, it's a difference, if you're in that Republican caucus, that they're the ones driving the agenda. And so that's why, you know, those types of cities have hired me in the past, is because they, they have no relationships or a voice to even get to, and, and so that's why I've been able to help them.
Thank you. And I'll just ask one more, and then somebody else, I mean, I could ask a whole bunch, but I'll, I want to make sure that everyone else gets a chance. So, how do you operate when two of your clients have an opposing position, or are vying for the same funds, and both can't receive them?
Sure. So I've never had where they're both vying for the same funds, that's never happened to me. I try to be somewhat careful in making sure that, you know, and not while I can't perceive any, or all, I guess, potential conflicts, I've never had that, where there's a fixed plot. Generally speaking, what, if I have a couple of clients, and, you know, again, this ARPA fund that was on, I had a couple, is, it's going through and putting together the program, and, and broad enough that, what, and there's been other transportation things, and what, what I've always had happen is either all of them get it, you know, and, and working with them, it's like, what's reasonable, you know, right? Not everybody's getting a billion-dollar, or a hundred-million-dollar road package, but either all of them get it, or none of them do. In other words, because it's usually a kind of a package, look, I'm trying, and one of the things why I've been successful is, it's not just me taking care of my clients, it's me understanding geography-wise, okay, how do I put together a coalition, how do I build this and do it so that it actually passes, versus me just trying to cherry pick. As far as conflicts, that, that's something that's huge to me, and so, I've yet to ever not be able to resolve those, but, yeah, if, if there is one, then I sit down and raise it with both of them. A lot of times, it's, you know, it gets worked out ahead of time, if, if I have to, then generally speaking, it's whatever client I had first, honestly, if, if there's not a way, and, and it's a, and it's going to be a perpetual conflict, a lot of times, one side will be like, look, you know, it's a conflict, but we don't care, or both will say, look, if you, if you don't work on it, a few of the clients I mentioned, like Salt Lake City and others, have multiple lobbyists, so if there's ever been a conflict there, they say, look, you, we'll assign somebody else to work on that type of an issue, but, you know, conflicts are, again, I go back to what I talked about with my integrity, that's something that I'm very proactive to raise, and say, hey, this is something that I'm concerned about, and, and I've turned down several clients, and just, as I can see the path going forward, it's like, at some point, that we're going to butt heads, and it's not going to work, and so I avoid those types, but, and then there's other random times that, you know, two people somehow randomly come together, and generally speaking, you can sit down, and I've been able to resolve those, but, yeah, it's something that I proactively sit down with both parties, and either, either we resolve it, or if we can't, then, then I would have to, you know, resign from, from one way.
Thank you.
Councilmember Love, can I go to you?
Yes, you, you brought up, one of the things that I think is, is one of our biggest problems, is that the powers that be don't know how large we are, and how large we have the potential of becoming very quickly. Have you had any kind of experience with trying to right that type of a problem?
Yeah, I'll go back a little bit, you know, and Ms., and I love them, they're a great client, you know, Salt Lake City's one, where it's, you know, every new administration, they're, they're going to be different, and we're going to not get along with the state. Philosophically, we're just, they're never going to get along. So, trying to work through that, that one, that was probably not the best one to work through, but Park City's one. Park City forever had a very negative relationship and perception of the state legislature. And I go back to that MIDA thing, at the time, Park City and Summit County were talking about jointly hiring, we, to, because they both had an interest in the project, or the problem with the project was, Summit County ultimately did not want to do it, so they bowed out, so it was just Park City, which I'm grateful for, because Summit County's much more difficult than Park City. If you fast-forward now, you know, twelve, ten, twelve, fourteen years, the sentiment of the legislature, and it's something I worked very hard at, is, while philosophically, they're still very different than Park City as far as the constituency and everything, they recognize what Park City does, as far as the tourism, what it brings to the state, what, how it's marketed around the world, and what they bring to the state. They recognize there's differences, but they see the positives. So they're, they're, they respect that, and there's a good relationship. There is a very different relationship with Summit County. The whole bill dealing with land use, dealing with stationary planning, and other things, you know, there's a specific section in there targeting Summit County, and that's honestly because they don't have somebody that, partly because their, their, their constituency and the elected officials are kind of under nose, honestly, at the legislature, but to some degree, they don't have somebody there kind of managing, managing that relationship, and working through, and they just talk past each other, and, and both are busy, and, and don't do that. So I guess, to me, that's a great example of, if you look at Park City, again, same constituency largely, and same whatever, they have a much better relationship with the state legislature than Summit County, and they don't, and I would say a lot of that is, is not only myself, but working with their electeds, and their staff and stuff, to kind of say, look, here's where they're coming from, how, you know, let's focus on some positive, here's, we can get a win together, and here's where we're going to agree to disagree, but let's do it in the right way. And a lot of times, you know, as you guys, as elected officials, you think lots, things get lost in translation, people get busy, and, and without somebody there actively kind of managing, and continually repairing and improving, and, and walking around with a fact sheet of, hey, did you know, this is, you know, this is how many visitors we had this year, this is how many ski days, this is how much money we brought in, this is all these types of things, you know, something similar for an Eagle Mountain, hey, did you know, this is what's happening, this is the growth, this is the, the types of businesses that are going there, this is the type of infrastructure needs. You know, as you talked about, until, you know, it was about a year, year or two ago, I was out here meeting a friend, you know, and it was the first time I had driven out here in years and years and years, it's like, this is miserable. I mean, until you've driven it, as you guys all do all the time, it's just, you don't fathom in your mind that, that, you know, to get to this much of a population base, there is such a choke point, that, and it's just, you know, candidly, and everybody that I've talked to, as I've been talking about, you know, hey, you're going to meet with Eagle Mountain, I'll try and help them, oh, yeah, Eagle Mountain, as far as, those that know anything know that, candidly, Eagle Mountain's been left by, and there, there has not been the same focus here to kind of that. And part of it is, it's kind of, you know, at the end, you know, there's not another here to kind of that. And part of it is, it's kind of, you know, at the end, you know, there's not another population center beyond you that you, you know, you're go through. And so that kind of just gets lost. And, and there's been, you know, a fair amount of turnover in your elected legislative relationships. And honestly, I think some of those that have been in the past haven't been too worried about city issues. They're focused on other things that they think are bigger and broader and, and, um, and don't want to be bothered. And so I think, again, something that I can help do is, is be that kind of constant advocate that is educating that is. Because you don't have, nor and likely in your near future, are going to have a strong, you know, that's going to really be able to, to drive that kind of an agenda or that's going to be their focus. And something that I can do is help to bring that and help to, to promote that. So, yeah, that'd be, Park City would be one example.
Um, okay. So we're new to this. Um, you're not, so that's good. Um, how do you normally go about defining objectives and scope for what we're going to do as a city and what you're going to tackle?
Yeah. So a big part of it is, is, uh, better understanding, and I, I barely know anything honestly about Eagle Mountain. So it's better understanding exactly what Eagle Mountain is right now, where they, where you're at, where in your growth, what are your, your transportation, you know. Largely I see from a, that I would see is from more of a tran- uh, transportation infrastructure improvements, as well as if there are some policy issues that are unique that the city's struggling with, talking through those with staff and others and saying, look, here's some. And then having an honest conversation of me being saying, look, that, that's just not going to happen for, you know, these reasons, or, you know, that's something that we can work on. It might take a year or two, but let's start the dial. You know, because a lot of these things, it takes a little bit of time. It doesn't just happen overnight. Some, some do. Some, you know, you know, things can get fixed. And so it's really sitting down with you, better understanding what that is and just kind of laying out. And some of the transportation stuff is longer term. It's not, you know, that you go up there and, and get a, you know, three, four hundred million dollar major project. But it's, all right, let's knock out a few smaller things. Let's start planning. Let's get an EIS funded. Let's start to get at least the, the clock started on some of these types of things continuing to advance and to work it forward. But a lot of it is just sitting down and as I better understand where you're at and your needs. And then it's me, you know, kind of as we talk through with staff and with, you know, whoever you want from, as electors, to, to kind of develop a strategy of, okay, here's, here, here's, you know, here's our brainstorm of things, right? Let's narrow this down to, okay, what, what can we actually do this year and what, what is feasible? And then working through to actually execute that. And so, um, you know, that's again, right, yeah, like you said, I have done it so I can bring expertise of, you know, most of the things aren't new ideas and new concepts. It's just reapplying it or tweaking it or changing. And so that's something that I can be very helpful in addressing and I think advancing what Eagle Mountain would be trying to do as, as they partner with the state.
And then you have quite a few clients. I don't know if those are all ongoing clients or one-time clients?
They're a mix.
With a one-time project, kind of a mix?
Yeah. And so some have been, I took over my lobby firm actually from my grandparents. My grandfather was a state legislator for 20 years. He was commissioner of agriculture with Bangor. My grandmother actually is one that started it in 1984. So we've had a couple of clients since then. Uh, they've now, they're out. Uh, the business actually passed away, but there's a few that. But every year you pick up some ongoing, you lose a couple. And then there's some that are a one-year thing or some of their couple of year thing and things like that.
So out of that, out of your day or out of a pie of how much time you have to devote to these projects over a year, what piece of the pie would be devoted to Eagle Mountain?
Uh, as we develop whatever that scope and that strategy is, honestly, whatever the time it takes to, to accomplish that. One of the things, like I say, I've been doing it now for 22 years, you know, this, um, I don't, I can't think of a time that barring something that I couldn't control, that, that I lost, if you will, as far as on a policy issue that at least I had a fair shot at. You know, some issues, it's just, it's a, you know, we're going to fight it. The, the winds are against us. But any, as far as something that I can actually influence, as well as a funding item, uh, you know, sometimes a bond package has fallen apart at the end of a session, but the next year we revive it. So again, I, you know, it's hard to answer that, you know, there's not an exact time. But again, you go, like I mentioned, a, a Park City's been for 14 years. A few of my other clients have been for, city clients have been for eight, 10, 12 years. And I, I guess I point to that as I've had success and, you know, they're not going to, they wouldn't pay me just to, because they like me. And so, you know, it's really kind of adapt whatever. And, and the nice part is, it's not, some years are, you know, honestly, some years you'll get much more bang for your buck than I will as far as time and vice versa. You know, there'll be other years that's not as heavy of a lift. And, and I manage that with the clients. It's like how, and, and honestly, the other thing I do at times is I will subcontract with other lobbyists. If, if something big has come up and I have to, to work through that, I will, again, hire and, and work with other lobbyists, uh, you know, together on different projects, anything like that. But it's honestly whatever, because what, for me, it's, you know, I've been in this 22 years and hope to be in another 20 years. And so it, it, you know, me trying to grab a quick line here or there, but not be successful isn't, you know, a good long-term strategy. And so I don't take on projects or take on clients. I don't honestly believe I can be successful and will, you know, work tirelessly to do that. And so honestly, it's whatever the time it takes and so far. And I, and honestly know my limits. It, you know, I'm not out running around talking to 20 cities saying, hey, there's 25 million, I can get you each a million because I can do that. And so I, I don't want to, you know, cry wolf and, and say I can do something because it's, you know, it's a small community, you know, that I would lose my credibility very quickly. And, and honestly, one of my critical clients that I really like to represent is MAG. And MAG has been one, when cities have talked to, have been very effusive in, in their praise of, of, you know, of our relationship and what I've been able to accomplish. And so I never want them to ever, you know, have mud on their face that they advocated and said, hey, if you, if you want to go after something, Dave's the guy that can help you get that. Yeah, he's been good for us. We believe in him. So those types of relationships are key to me to, to be successful for. So that's why, whatever it takes.
Councilmember Wright?
A lot of my questions have been asked and answered, David. So thank you for being here. Um, I, I do have just a, a couple of others. I, I was curious about the working relationship with your, your existing clients and how we would fit into that puzzle. Uh, also, I, I, I'm, I'm just curious, your take. I mean, you've spent a few minutes with us here. How do you think you could help our city generally?
Uh, well, as we talked about, I think certainly as developing a partnership more with the state, helping the state and, you know, key state lawmakers, as well as members of the executive branch, um, uh, and, and certainly those departments that have interactions with, that, that deal with the city, a better understanding of, of what Eagle Mountain is and what Eagle Mountain is planning to be. Um, and, and what and how the state can be a partner and help and work with the city to do that. Um, that I think sees a key component. Like I say, I think there is this, I'm very confident that I could help get some money for a, a water project for, that, that would be ARPA qualified for the city that, uh, in the short term. Um, and then I think in the longer term would be broader infrastructure, road and as well as other water infrastructure. You know, that's kind of the, you know, roads have been sexy, if you will, for the last decade of trying to kind of build in the state. And the state has done very well as far as you look across other states investing in infrastructure. But water is now finally, you know, the good and the bad of the drought. I guess the one good thing is it's finally raised everybody's awareness that, hey, water is, you know, kind of important. We're in a desert. And, you know, unfortunately, too many people, as long as the tap turns on, the water comes out, we're fine. And so we've finally had some key policymakers start to wake up that that's something that if we don't, as we've done with roads, start to get more ahead of and work towards, we're going to have that be our bottleneck. So I would think really from an infrastructure funding perspective, as well as, as different policy issues. Because like, you know, we talked about Eagle Mountain is, you know, and I don't know where it ranks, but it's got to be in the top 10 fastest growing cities in the, in the state. And so there are going to be unique policy issues that at times constrain or, or hurt Eagle Mountain and what you're trying to do. And so I would see, you know, some unique policy things, uh, and, um, some infrastructure funding. And then, like I say, just broadly kind of helping better educate and raise awareness. And, and, you know, for those that, that, you know, of you that want to interact a little bit more with state legislators and kind of tell the story as elected to elected, I think, and help facilitate things like that.
Do, do you have any employees, I mean, full-time employees, people that you employ? Or is it you?
No, it's, it's largely me. And at times, like I say, I'll, I'll partner with other lobbyists and things like that. But as far as full-time employees, no, I don't.
And, and just a number of current clients off the top of your head, how many clients do you think that you're responsible to today?
About 20.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions that have been here.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Burnham, do you have anything you want to, uh, questions or? Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, David, for being with us. Oh, yeah. Oh, Jared is there? Uh, Councilmember Gray. Okay, hold on. Councilmember Gray, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm the same. I think my questions were answered kind of through the deal, so we're good.
Okay. Super. Thank you. All right. Thank, thank you. Okay. We are pretty snug on time here, but I think we can at least roll through the consent agenda really quick and see if there are any questions here. So 9B is the franchise agreement Utah broadband. Any questions there? Uh, Councilmember Gray or Councilmember Burnham, any concerns with, uh, Utah broadband franchise agreement?
Not for me.
I'm good. Okay.
My concern was that it says in that contract that it, the contract goes for five years. It is, can be renewed for five years. And that if there's any inconsistencies between the contract and code or code changes that we make, that the contract, um, trumps the code for, for 10 years.
Okay. Jeremy, would you like to speak to that?
I'm sorry, it wasn't.
Okay, so.
Basically, it sounds like any kind of changes that we made to code concerning this type of service, um, would not apply to this company for 10 years, potentially.
Dude, they, sorry.
The Utah, the franchise agreement?
Um, no, I, no, anything that we change in code would apply to them. I mean, there's a provision in there that basically says we can amend the contract to create, well, if, if it's a change that we implement to make it fair for everybody. So the, the intent of these is try to keep competition among everybody equal. So if we had to change something, um, in our code to try to keep that equal, or, you know, something else to, you know, technology changes and we had to implement something else, we can amend the agreement to include that in the agreement. But I don't know if that answered your question or if you're...
Okay. So, so can, so, I, I, if I understand Councilmember Love's question, is it, uh, i- if we make a change to code, are they held to the code or does anything contradictory in the franchise agreement override code? Is that, would that be accurate representation?
Um, yes.
I'll have to admit, I, I did review it and I drafted this a while ago, so I'll have to look through it real quick. Maybe I can look through it and answer your question.
Okay, it says, okay, on page one, if there is any inconsistency between providers' rights and obligations under the telecommunications ordinance as amended in this agreement, the provisions of this agreement shall govern during its term. Um, 1.3.
Okay, is, would it, would it be all right if we have Jeremy?
Yeah.
Address that later. Okay. Uh, and Finn has her hand up. Finn?
Oh, I was just going to say that, um, we included that with the last one in case there were any changes that did come in. And, um, so the Silver Lake was the last one, I believe, that we did. And we had that included in that one.
But basically it says that if we change something, it goes to the agreement. Does that mean that they don't have to follow new code or just if the, if the code per chance?
It, it stayed at, my recollection was that, um, it allowed us to change the agreement if we had to make any changes to code.
It doesn't?
We, we, yeah. We could make changes in the, uh, if there were any changes that we needed to make, um, that they would be, they would have to comply with that.
Yeah, I, I think if you, um, if you read the whole paragraph, you know, provided however the, that the provider agrees that subject to lawful exercise of police powers of the city, otherwise provider agrees to comply with any such amendment. So I think if there is anything specific in the agreement, um, but most of the agreement references back to our code anyway.
Okay.
So it would, if there's anything else specific in here, but again, I, because most of it references back to that they're agreeing to comply with our code, then any changes would be applicable.
That makes sense. We're not completely rewriting the code and giving them code that's going to remain static.
Yeah, no, no, it's definitely not.
Okay. Uh, 9C is master infrastructure agreement Stadium LLC.
So quickly, we've mentioned before on a couple of change orders that we've had, that Facebook's promised to help pay for some of the infrastructure, uh, to be used for reuse water irrigation at Quarry Ride Park. So this agreement is, is, uh, makes me not a liar by bringing this to the city council for approval. It, it will pay for the filtration. It will be paid for the, the booster pump at Quarry Ride. It will also pay for a type two reuse treatment, which is treated, uh, a wastewater effluent that would be chlorinated and then provided to Facebook for dust control on their site instead of using culinary water. And as we have been working with Facebook for the last year or so, they've, they've noticed, especially with the water department, that there's been some, some issues in filling, uh, personnel in there. So they offered to throw in helping us out with some staffing for, for up to two years. So that's what this, this agreement entails. Um, one note that I, I did want to make that I didn't catch until yesterday is on the, uh, on the booster pump and the filtration. The filtration's done. The booster pump, uh, but for both of those projects, they have a completion date of October 31st, which is really just six weeks away. And, uh, the booster's going to be hard to get it done by that timeframe. I would like to amend that agreement, that portion of the agreement. So probably at the end of this year, 12, 31, 22, we should be able to make that timeframe without any, any concern. But, um, and, and I guess on, on the downside or on, on their, to their side, they did include, uh, the city re-prioritize resurfacing Pony Express, uh, prior to the end of 2024, which is a project that we've already been considering and, and our programming and, and in fact would be able to get reimbursed for part of that from Google. So I think that in a nutshell, is there anything else, Jeremy, that?
Nope. I think that's it.
For the record, Chris, we always believed you.
I got worried a couple of times, so it dragged on.
Okay. Any, any further questions on 9C? All right. Let's go to 10A.
Uh, I had a question.
Yes.
So, uh, you mentioned that you wanted, and I'm driving, so I apologize. I'm going to get this wrong. The, uh, that you wanted to amend the agreement. Do we need to make it in the motion or, I'm not sure that I caught on to that. Do we need to change something?
So we would need to change something. So you probably will need to pull this off the consent agenda so that you can make that modification to the agreement. Yes, that's a good point to make.
All right. Was that it? Councilmember?
And then, y- yes, yes. So I guess duly noted on that one for everyone. Uh, I had a second question, not necessarily this topic, but, and not calling you a liar either. I think it was early last fall and I just wanted to kind of ask status. Uh, Facebook also gave some money for a, I'm going to say it wrong, like a telescope park over in, there's a Pioneer Park or in that area. Is there, is that happening? Is that, like, what, is there, is that stalled for some reason or? I'm not over there a lot. Like, what's the progress is what I'm asking.
Yeah. Uh, Paul, Paul did give an update on that earlier. Uh, Paul, could you give us your version on?
So it's doing other, other issues, the water line?
No, 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 no. The, the observatory, the timeline for this observatory.
Yeah. So, um, it should be, um, completed in spring. I think that the, um, work is going to commence in September, if I remember that correctly.
So, yeah, work will commence this fall to be completed by spring.
I can, yeah. So it's, it's going, but I can give you more details as well.
Yeah, I apologize. I missed that earlier. When you mentioned Facebook, I thought you just rung a bell. So anyway, we're good.
All right. Very good. Okay, let's move on to 10A. Uh, Overland Phase D plat two into warranty. 11A is, uh, change order, well number seven, site prep package, change order number one, Van Con Inc.
So I think we brought it to the council that they did encounter some rock and, and these are just, uh, the costs that they've tracked that were increases to that. We, we do want to make probably a couple of modifications that will be a deductive change order before we finalize, but it's kind of the way.
Okay. All right. Item 12A is July 5th, 2022 minutes, regular city council meeting. Any changes needed on the minutes? All right. Then our last consent agenda item is 13A, resolution of Eagle Mountain City, Utah, amending Eagle Mountain City, uh, consolidated fee schedule for central water project water purchases. Questions there?
That's just a fee from last time, right, that we tabled the IFA and IFFP for?
So we tabled that and my understanding is we were going to bring that back when we had those fees in place. So it's not on this agenda. Will we see it next meeting?
That's the, that's the anticipation. So, uh, Chris, Kimberly and I met with Fred Philpot. I was just telling Councilmember Curtis, part of the issue was just trying to iron out the differences between attaching capacity for infrastructure to the actual dollars spent on the infrastructure. When they don't tie out, trying to cinch that up and make sure you're actually recouping all the costs associated with infrastructure. So that's still kind of in play, but we're hoping that that will be all ironed out by next time.
Okay. But these are, I mean, we were going to bring the ducks together, but we needed our ducks in a row. This is the one that needs to happen first anyway.
This is the one that needs to happen. This is the one that needs to happen as fast as we can because again, we're, we're not charging enough for what this is going to cost us. So the longer we wait, the more we stand to lose.
Uh, Councilmember Gray or Councilmember Burnham, any questions, comments?
Nope.
No.
Okay, very good. Well, that concludes our consent agenda. Being that it's six twenty five, I'd like to forego the scheduled item. We'll just handle that in policy and we do not have a closed session, correct? So it is six twenty four, so we will close work session. And get back as close to seven as we can for policy. So the work session is. And we are grateful for these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. All right, welcome everyone. This is the Eagle Mountain City, uh, city council policy session. I have thirteen minutes after seven PM. It's Tuesday, July tenth, twenty twenty two. And Councilmember Burnham is joining us online. So. We will call this meeting to order and Councilmember Wright, would you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance's place? Everyone, please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have some information items. I will read those off. On Saturday, July thirtieth, Eagle Mountain City will hold its second annual summer bash and laser show. You won't wanna miss it, I guarantee you. So this event will take place from four PM to ten fifteen PM. Please come out to Quarry Ride Park to enjoy the bounce houses, patriotic kids parade, pie eating contest, trash panda drum group and laser show. For more information on this, please check our city website and social media pages. Residents are encouraged to water their lawns three times per week. Residents at odd numbered addresses are encouraged to water Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Even numbered, numbered addresses are encouraged to water Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday. Thank you for helping Eagle Mountain achieve its conservation goals. And just a little side note there. Those efforts are, are making a positive impact on the system. So we, we definitely applaud our, our residents for their, their efforts and, and attention to that. Eagle Mountain City is asking residents to refamiliarize themselves with the approved fireworks restriction map. As we approach the Pioneer Day holiday, residents can learn more by visiting unifiedfire.org. To receive city notifications, including emergency info, news events and traffic alerts, sign up at emcity.org forward slash notify me. Concludes our information items. So now we will turn time over to public comment. It is now seven fifteen. We'll open a public comment and this, this time is set aside for. Things that are not public hearing items on our agenda. If, if we have a separate public hearing, then we, we'd like for you to speak during that time. But this is for everything else that may be on your mind. This is, this is the time for that. So. All right, I don't, I, and also there are forms in the back. If anyone would like to fill one out. Do we have?
One fifteen.
It, it is, oh, I gotta look, okay. Leanne is so efficient, just like ahead of me here. So let me. Here we go. Yes. Zach, you are up. And just go ahead and introduce yourself for the record.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. I'm Zach Hewish, resident of Eagle Mountain. I live in the Sage Valley. Development next to Cedar, just west of Cedar Pass. And last time I was here, I was here to petition the city council and mayor and everyone to. Secure funding for Airport Road. And I appreciate Steve and Chris. Paul mentioned that you were a key in getting that across the line with MAC funding. And so I just wanna thank everyone for making that happen. That'll be a, I think, a huge positive development for our city and for my neighborhood as well. Today, so thank you, I wanted to address a, a separate item that has to do with the Sage Valley Park. This was a park that was built years ago. By Patterson. It was kind of a roll out the grass and drive away situation. The sprinkler heads don't overlap. The grass is kinda going away, turning into big, large brown spots. But it's a space that our neighborhood loves. We have started to be more proactive in asking the city for trees. Last year, we planted five trees. Our neighborhood did, the, the city provided. We've been manually watering those trees, my neighbor and I, each twice a week. We connect all of our hoses from our houses and we walk out and water those. Over time, there have been trees that were planted, later died, they were cut off. So we've just had several stumps in our park. And so this year, we've pulled those stumps out and we're now manually watering those trees until they kinda take good roots. We've got the five from last year and then we had ten more trees on Arbor Day that were delivered that we planted. We're now watering those. My purpose for meeting with you tonight is to. Think about a long-term plan for this park to kind of restore it to what a park should be, a place that people can come and enjoy. And there are kids that come play soccer and unfortunately, it's just yellow grass and brown dirt that they're kicking a ball on. And I feel like we can do better than that. So my thoughts are to over a multi-year phase because these things generally are. Oh, sorry. Thirty seconds, okay. I'd like to ask the city council and mayor to install or finish a continuous trail around the park. Zero scape elements of the park, more of a natural scaping, so we have, have to water less. And I'm working with Brad, the parks director, to reconfigure the sprinklers. And then finally to put in a couple pickleball courts. So this year, the focus would be on finishing the continuous trail. Thank you.
Since you mentioned pickleball, are you looking for lights as well or just courts?
Uh, I think just courts would be fine. Courts would, courts would be good, kinda like the Quarry Ride pickleball court, something that kids can play, parents can play. And it also just cuts out, you know, a big swath of.
What would you think? What, what number of courts would you recommend?
I think two would be sufficient if you had two courts or two nets.
Okay.
Yeah, so you could get, get a little tournament going there. But again, just like multi-phasing, a trail would probably be a good place to start. Right now, about half the park has a path going around and I own one of the properties that is adjacent to the park and my neighbor owns the other property. And we're both in agreement. It would be fine if there was a trail that kinda came back.
Improvement of sprinklers is probably pretty self-explanatory, but the trail, you're talking about a paved trail, correct?
Just an asphalt.
Yeah.
Trail, mm-hmm. It's about, I measured the distance, it's about three hundred, three hundred yards. Steps. I took three hundred steps. Three hundred feet, or, yeah. I think it's three hundred yards, actually. So about nine hundred feet, however you measure that, about five, five feet wide. Yeah, currently, people do run around the park and there's just grass. They'll just run behind my house. There's no trail there, but they just run on it anyway. And it would be fun for the kids just to ride their bikes. You know, and their parents could sit and enjoy it. So that would be phase one.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I like your approach, yeah.
It looks like there is like a concrete area to the west of the playground or something, some square there. Maybe it's a building. What is it that's west of the?
There's a pavilion on the east side of the park.
There's a pavilion.
Oh, and a volleyball court.
Oh, there's a volleyball court.
And the court does need some sand, by the way.
What's that?
The court needs some sand.
Oh, okay.
It can, it blows away every year. We get some wind.
Paul, I, I don't see Brad here. Do we know what the, do you know what? Oh, there's Brad. What's the designation of this park? What type?
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood, okay. So that's like. Trying to think of what other neighborhood parks. Like, just to gauge the, the scope. Steve, can you think of, cause like, this seems like it's fairly big for a neighborhood park, is it? So I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm just trying to picture that, but I was also gonna ask, do we, do we have a list that, of, of our cap, possible capital projects that we could put this on to consider?
Yeah, we can always add anything to capital projects. Knowing that this is just a neighborhood park, it does not impact the eligible.
That's true.
So just keep that in mind that this would have to come straight out of the general fund. Any, any improvements like that.
Okay.
Any further questions for Zach? All right, Councilmember Burnham, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
And I. Would you, is your lovely daughter willing to come up and address this as well?
She would like to put in a pool. So I thought we'll, we'll settle on a.
Noted.
Does she have a good job? Do anything with money?
That's true. We, we discussed it as a neighborhood if we came together, but we'll go with the path for now.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, just to respond briefly, the park, the improved section of the park is just over four acres. So, and the neighborhood park is generally what, three to, three to five or three, under ten. So, yep.
All right. And do we have anyone else that? We have Tiffany Walden with us tonight. I walked right by you and didn't, didn't notice. Is there anything that you want to mention tonight or?
No.
Come on, come on up and say no up here.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Tiffany Walden. I li, I'm actually a resident as well right now. I, I saw on your agenda that you were discussing the CWP water. And I think a lot of you know how passionate I am about water conservation here in our city. And, and you all know how nervous I am up here. I don't public speak, so my legs are shaking, okay? I know that when I moved back in to the office house that I'm living at now, we have seven bathrooms. And all of the toilets were leaking and they were probably leaking for many years as it sat vacant. And I know that we've discussed water before and how there's really no penalty to the residents when water is leaking, right? They get, they only get charged so much water. So as we're talking about water and how you're gonna charge developers more money or more water to come into the developments. That I think that it should also be addressed, the water that the citizens use as well. Cause there's probably multiple toilets and leaky faucets and outside things that are just leaking. And at the end of the day, they don't have to pay for it. So that's all I wanted to talk about.
Do we, that's another great topic. So Chris, do we have anything that sorta cues us if, if there's something unusual?
I don't think we had anything that accused us. You know, obviously, we did enact tier grades or we, we amended our tiered grades. And so we do have, as more and more water is used, obviously, the, the price per gallon of water starts to go up. So. So that would be one penalty that might be able to help encourage homeowners to make sure they don't have leaking toilets. But as far as. A real-time program that we have, I, I know I've seen it in other cities where they can look at their water usage on a daily basis or, or, you know. And I don't know that we, we have that in our system.
You know, it's interesting, cause I have run across devices that you can purchase and maybe we could like promote those or something. That tells you, hey, you have a constant water use here somewhere and, and you need to find it. So.
You can hear it.
What?
You can hear it.
Yeah, okay.
You don't need a system. I mean, you can literally hear like something leaking in my house. You can hear it just draining and draining. I have seven bathrooms that were doing it. So we just simply change out the little thing that corrodes over time. It's fifteen dollars to do. But how many people are paying attention to that? So as you're asking developers to put in more water, maybe we should ask the citizens or the residents, right, to be more concerned.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yes. Yeah, yes, please.
So Tiffany, one of the, and I wish Mac were here. He's been trying to get on that water leak that actually, I'll just say is done. It's, it's fixed. Water's restored. So we're good there. But Mac could be able to confirm this, but I believe we're going to what's called an AMR system. It's an automated meter reading system. Instead of having to have a. We've got somewhat of an automated reading system in the form of a employee that has to drive down the streets of the city. Has a radio inside the cab that picks up the signals from all the meters on that street. This would be antennas that are installed that can actually read huge sections of the city all at once. And I believe with that system comes the capability in time to have residents be able to log in and actually see their water data. I, I believe. I'm, I'm just gonna put that huge caveat in there. I can find out more information from Mac. But kinda to your, your point about the, the water, I mean, we, we got an engineering report that showed we're gonna be short to, to build out the city. And so I met with some of my employees and said, hey, what, what, what can we do to try to proactively address this? And I've let council know and it's actually gone before planning commission, but a plan to try to, to change the standards for future developments. And that way pare down how much landscaping is, you know, water-wise and how much is not. So that's something that's being worked on. It's still got a lot of work to go. Council needs to be able to, to see it, vet it and decide where they wanna go with that as well. But that's something that we're working on.
I know. We've also discussed zero scape as well. I would like to start implementing zero scape in all of my parks. In all of my neighborhoods and allow the homeowners to pick a zero scape package that is attractive to the neighborhood. The seventeen fifty four house just right across the way is completely zero scape. It's beautiful. It's got trees, it's got big rocks, it's got bushes, it's got different colors, it's got patterns. It's completely zero scape and it looks prettier than any of the yards in the neighborhood with grass. So it can be done tastefully. It can be done. It's, if you don't save money on doing it, you do save on water. So, and I know that if you say we don't have enough water for the growth of the city, we need to conserve. In every way we can.
Paul, Paul could probably comment on that too, because that is a project that's underway.
Yeah, that's, and that's what we're, you know, we've been doing internally is trying to analyze how do we get to that point? And what does that mean for the actual use, depending on what type of landscaping you use, you know, you've got. You've actually, something I didn't know before, but there's a, a thing called zero scaping. That's where there's nothing. There's no plants. We don't necess, we don't wanna go to that. But there's also zero scaping. There's what's called local scapes where, you know, you actually have a specified amount of. Plant life that is approved for this area that's native to this area. It doesn't require a lot of water and grows well and can be maintained in a, in a beautiful way. And then you still have where, you know, of course, people are, you know, if they have children, they may still wanna have, you know, backyard turf, that kinda thing. So we're, we're going through all these options. And again, I wasn't able to attend planning commission, but. I believe planning commission saw kind of a first rendition of this to get their feedback. And I think that it's then gonna come to city council. And I'm sure it's, it's gonna take a while to get to the point where, you know, council's comfortable. And we can move forward with something. But we're working towards it.
A lot of grass, a lot of overwatering, a lot of water in parking lots, roads, a lot of waste.
All right, well, thank you, Tiffany. All right, so.
I was just gonna say, isn't there also a, a little bit of a difference between capital cost and O and N as well? So like, we're not necessarily charging the residents for capital. We're charging them for, I mean, they're charged capital through their building permit and the house.
That's a good point and.
But like O and N, it's a little bit different, right?
Right, so again, and that kind of goes to what's on this agenda for Central Utah Water. This is just purely capital, to basically to source the water. Central Utah Water has a schedule. It shows what is on there. We've been undercharging. We need to not, we need to change that so that we're not going to leave the residents with the bill for infrastructure that the developer should have worked into the price of their development as a whole. But yeah, as far as O and M goes, after that, it's, it's all on the residents. All the O and M for upkeep of the system, delivery of the water through the existing infrastructure has all got to be paid for by the residents.
And it doesn't change that we need to conserve water. I mean, look for ways to conserve water. That's, that's...
Yeah, so that's why, you know, Chris mentioned the, the tiered system. That's what that's designed to try to, you know, incentivize residents that, hey, if you stay below this amount, you only play, pay this price per gallon. If you go above that now, because you're using more than what is deemed necessary or average, and again, that kind of, there, there are a lot of nuances to that, a lot of things that you can say, well, what about this? What about that? That could go into determining what you think is an average for a specified lot size. But it says, okay, if you go above what is considered reasonable, you're gonna pay for it. You can use it, but you're gonna pay for it. You're gonna pay more for it. Sorry.
I said, right now that it's not in place.
It, it is, yeah. So when we, we did the rate increase in April, that I think took effect in May?
Something, yeah, something like that.
That went into effect as well. We did have a tiered sys, tiered rate system before that, but it was not effective. The first tier was so big that almost no one got out of it. So we, yeah.
And to clarify, I, I think it's probably worth saying that we didn't go extremely aggressive on that.
No, and that's true.
As a council, we chose not to.
Yeah, there were different options, and for lack of a better term, pain points, I guess. And, and to consider how much of the total water use you're gonna capture, depending on which option council chose. And so, yes, it's the one that council chose is not, it's more effective than what we had before, but it's not aggressive.
And that's, that's just a...
Penalizing or overly, overbearing.
Right, and that, that's, I just want to be very open about, you know, the decision that, that, that might not be as aggressive as maybe many would like, or that you would like. So it's good to be transparent.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So let's go ahead and now close public comment at seven thirty-four. And we will now turn time over to City Council for City Council and Mayor items. Councilmember Gray, can we start with you?
Yes, and I want to ask if we can talk about it right now, because it's earlier in the meeting. Normally, I'd wait till later. But also, Chief McDowell and I had a conversation earlier this week, and I wanted to maybe point out for the residents and, and then get his take, or, or Steve, or whoever's, actually, it was Zach, right, that was gonna call UDOT about the ride-in and ride-out on SR seventy-three specifically, where that's, it, it's a ride-in, ride-out on purpose, and I see...
I've already talked to UDOT about that.
Okay, so...
A couple of weeks ago, I talked to, to UDOT, and they said that they'd look into it. I haven't had any follow-up conversations from them since, and I didn't know Zach was also talking...
I think it was Zach that we, we had asked to, when I talked to Eric, right, wasn't, so anyway, what's the solution? A sign? I mean, right now, we can't even call it illegal, right? It's part of the problem. And, and I mean, it's not even, it's designed for ride-in, ride-out, and it's literally stacking. Yeah, doing U-turns, and it's dangerous when I'm coming at fifty-six miles an hour at most.
Yeah, so you, you asked the question on the legality of that turn. And after looking into the state code, if you can safely make a U-turn of that and get onto the south side of the road and then turn in, it's not going the wrong direction. So the, the caveat in the statute on the, on the wrong turn, the U-turn, the U-turn section of it is that it doesn't, it can't impede traffic or slow traffic down when doing so. And that's where we can do some enforcement on some U-turns, because obviously, traffic flow and traffic pattern, at the times of day that you're talking about, there would be some education that could be done on that from our end. But as far as wrong way, it doesn't fit that, because they're swinging over, making that turn, and getting into the shoulder if they're doing it safely and the right way. Now, you're saying they're not. And our, and we had guys go out there and observe that night that you called me, and they observed a couple and made a couple stops at that point, too. So it's gonna be an educational thing, and I don't know what the answer is on the, on the UDOT side, so we'll just have to wait and see what their data or, you know, assessment comes back on, but...
Okay. Perfect, yeah. And that's what I figured on the enforcement side, but I think for sure, whether UDOT...
It wouldn't fall into a violation of like, wrong, uh, wrong way, or it, it's not signed as a one-way.
Unless they determine to do that.
And if they went into the, if, unless they went into the right-hand turn, which they're not, they're flipping around and going into that.
Right.
The problem.
So, so is UDOT planning to correct that, you think, or?
I pulled up the response email that I got from them, and he said, "We will look into the issue at Seneca Mountain." So I will follow up again on that and ask them if he's been, had a chance to take a look at it, and if there's any recommended suggestions.
I, I guess, and I can ask council, or whoever wants to chime in, whether it's the sheriff or whoever. I, I personally think it would be safer just to remove the, the concrete and just let them turn, if we're gonna allow it. I mean, that's safer than...
Yeah, as soon as it was put in, I, I talked to UDOT about it. I said, "Can you guys double-check that?" Because I'm not so sure.
I don't feel good, I mean, like I say, I'd rather them just go on.
And, yeah.
So I guess, unless somebody else...
That's gonna create problems as the freeway continues, like that. I think that was required because of the freeway. I mean, we didn't even want to put that there to begin with, that I recall. It was just, that was the option, and...
Well, I, I don't see it as safe. I mean, it's just a matter of time. Somebody didn't see someone coming, and we have accidents where there's a light, let alone where there's not. I mean, it's, like I say, it's a matter of time, so... I'm speaking my piece. Anyone that's listening over there, I mean, it's a ride-in, ride-out on purpose. And we're gonna do our part, I guess, to, to figure that out.
Here you go. I don't have any...
That's my soapbox. Now I should say, thanks for coming, everybody, you know, fast the mic, go ahead. I'm glad to be here.
Okay. Councilmember Wright?
I think to Councilmember Gray's point, you know, I, I agree with you. I think that it does create at least a condition that could become very unsafe, right? Because it's a constant, not, not constant, but there are frequent U-turns that are made there, and then the right-hand turn that comes into that development. I don't think that that's the intent of how it was designed or put in originally, so... I appreciate you bringing that up and, and, and working with staff to, to see what we can do to correct that. And I, I think I'll probably leave that there. Also, I just want to welcome those that are here, recognize Unified who is up here in, in force today, and thank them for their service, and as well as our, all of our first responders, grateful for the work that you do. Recognizing that we're coming into the twenty-fourth of July celebration. We made it past the fourth of July, and we're all still here, and everything is still, at least mostly unburnt. I'm gonna say it that way. And I hope that that continues. Just encourage our residents to continue to exercise good judgment and caution in the, in the use of the fireworks that they choose to, to display, and encourage everyone to enjoy the, the celebration that the city's gonna put on on the thirtieth. I think you'll, you'll find that to be a really fun celebration.
Councilmember Love?
Yes, I would echo that. Part of my family went to the first summer bash that they had with the Slithery Light Show, and it was a wild success. So we're definitely gonna go again this year, and I think it's a great tradition that the city has going on. And I'd like to welcome the people that are here, and again, thank them. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Curtis? Uh-oh, uh-oh, sit, sit back.
Wel, welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming today. And your dad joke today is, what did the thesaurus eat for breakfast?
What did the what eat for bre...?
What did the thesaurus eat for breakfast? A synonym role.
A synonym role, of course, of course, what else?
Yep, that's your joke for the day.
All right. Nothing else, Dad? Okay. Councilmember Burnham, you're up.
How am I supposed to follow a dad joke?
I know, you gotta, you gotta be prepared.
It's kind of crazy. Um, I, I too want to encourage everybody to attend the city event at the end of the month. It's, it's so much fun, and our staff do such a great jo, job in terms of our events, and I'm grateful for the hard work that they do. I'm grateful for how our residents, for the most part, were very safe with their fireworks, and I hope that that will continue through the July twenty-fourth holiday. And I'm especially grateful that the sound is working so well tonight, and ever, so somebody knock on wood, because everything is working really well. I can even hear Brett, and so I think that's amazing. So, thanks for all the hard work on the tech side. I really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Burnham. All right, yeah, welcome, everyone. I've got a few additional little things that I, I want to mention. Yeah, thanks for, thanks to our UFA people for, for being here. We had a, had a really good UFA, UFSA meetings this morning. And Battalion Chief Fossum is not with us tonight, but next, next meeting, he will address us on a project that he's been working on. And so, just a heads up, it's not, it's not really heads up, because I don't have a lot of information, but, oh, he, oh. Embert, are you with us? Are you on there?
Maybe he can't.
Maybe, maybe he can't.
Can you? No, I'm online. You got me?
Ah, okay. Okay, so I just wanted to, wanted to mention, and correct me if I get this wrong, but I believe it's Standards of Cover. Did it, did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir, yeah.
And, uh, interesting title, but now, I haven't had a chance to dive very deep into this. I'm just kind of surface level. But I know this is a project you've been working on for some time, and I find it intriguing. I, I think, I'm, I'm really interested to see what all is in that, and both how it affects Eagle Mountain Service, and maybe, maybe what Eagle Mountain can learn from it. Maybe, maybe we can glean a little bit from your, from your work that you've done. So do you want to touch on it now, or you want to just save it for later?
In, in short, I'll, I'll briefly talk about it and save it for later primarily, but in short, it's, it just basically identifies the risks and potential risks that we have within the community, and establishes kind of benchmarks and standards that we are, that the city feels we should meet, and certain timeframes that we should be responding to certain incidents and, and incident types. So obviously, there's a difference between our response to a wildland fire versus a house fire versus a medical incident versus, you know, a hazmat incident. Some of those are longer duration, some of those are shorter duration, and so this document kind of dives into what we face regularly, both within the community as well as within Unified Fire as a whole, and identifies those specialty services. And then we will kind of dive into the nitty-gritty with the City Council and see kind of what your risk tolerance is. And obviously, that has budgetary impacts, also has, you know, response impacts, and, and what the city is comfortable, and the elected officials are comfortable with how we respond and when we respond. So it's, it's a large document, pretty comprehensive. Our part is, is only about twenty-two pages or so within, that deals with Eagle Mountain specifically. The document as a whole is, is about five hundred and seventy pages overall. It's, it's a beefy document, but it, it is in, it's pretty, pretty detailed and, and helps us to understand really what we face as a community within Eagle Mountain, and then on the broader scope within Unified Fire. So if there are questions, I'll entertain them. Otherwise, we will be discussing this ad nauseam, I'm sure, in the future.
Well, it is a long document, but thankfully, you've given us some time to review it. And if I remember correctly, our, our, our target is to review and approve it by February of next year. Is that correct?
Uh, that's what UFA Board Chair Dolly recommended, and so that's kind of what we'll, what we'll aim for, and hopefully get it off the ground and, and see where we end up. So I, I think it's realistic, but there's, there's a lot that goes into it, and it's gonna be revisited annually as well as in conjunction with our strategic planning process, so...
Great. So certainly, if, if, if any of our councilmembers has a question, we'll welcome that. But like you mentioned, we will be spending time on this, so there's no pressure to, to, you know, get all your questions answered right now. There will be time. So, all right. Everybody good for now? All right. Okay. Battalion Chief Fossum, thank you for that report. We'll look forward to more.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. One other thing I just want to mention is that I, I received a message, or is it? From the people over at Redemption Hill Church. They are feeding our firefighters and our deputies, and also have invited city staff and council, if you want to come by for dinner. This is Thursday at six PM at, at their, at their church, which is nine-five-one-seven Mount Erie Drive. So firefighters, deputies especially, but also any city staff, any city council that would like to join, are welcome. So I'm just passing, passing that along.
Mayor, what was the time on that again?
Six, uh, six PM on Thursday, this coming Thursday. Yeah, yep. And I believe that's all I have. So let's now move on then, yeah, to our consent agenda. We've, we're pulling off two items. We're pulling off nine A and nine C, but the rest of the consent agenda remains intact. And so I will entertain a motion to approve that remaining consent agenda.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Love. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gray.
I was holding off, because I want to make sure it was nine C and nine A.
Nine A and C.
And, and you just mentioned pulling it off, and it was so moved, but placing it on the regular agenda?
Correct, yes, sorry.
Yes.
That is, to be, to be precise, you are correct, yes.
I'm good, she's good.
Okay. Is LeAnn good? You good? Okay. And we even have, so Finn is with us, too. It's, I'm so glad that she can be with us, even if it's remotely. So Finn, please wave your hand anytime you need to jump in here. We are so...
We're standing in the camp.
So, yes, we are so glad to, to have you with us, even if it's remote. And there she is.
She's waving back.
Okay. Are you just waving back to, would you like to speak, or was that just a...
I'm sure she knows how to speak if she was.
Okay, okay, we'll just take that as just a wave, all right. Okay, okay. So we have motion and a second. Let's go, let's, let's go to a vote then. Let's start with Councilmember Wright.
Yes.
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnham?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. We will now go back to those items that we pulled off, starting with item nine A, Lobbyist Services Agreement Legislative Executive Consulting LLC. So David Stewart is not with us at the moment, but he spoke to us in work session. So, who, Councilmember Gray, did you, were you able to monitor any of that?
Yeah, there was parts that I've missed. I, I struggled getting, man, I had a rough day today, but.
I'm sorry.
But I have a great attitude.
Anything you want to talk about?
Um, I just, just, man, I wish.
It's $75 an hour if you want, if you'd like to talk about it.
I, I'd, I would like to know if we could add 25th hour in a day so I could get a little bit more done and things like that. No, man, I, you know, there's, there's some concerns, there's a lot of, you know, and I listened and of course, had a lot of the same questions. I think they were answered adequately. It seems to me, if I can be bold or blunt, which.
Direct.
Yeah, direct, it, it, because it's not the way that I want it to come across probably, but it seems a little loose, you know, as far as you don't really know what you get and what you pay for, which is what a lot of the questions were. However, I'm confident that, it's nothing against the gentleman, I'm confident that he's one of the best in the business. There's just no way to quantify it and so, it's, you know, I struggle. However, the more I mow, like I really mowed it over on my drive and I just, I mean, I don't know how else you do it. That's how they all do it, right? It's, I mean, it's, if you're going to get in the game, that's, that's the game. So, I don't, I don't really know.
Yeah, it really does remind me a little bit of selling advertising. You know, you're selling that service that you can't, like, you can't see it going on, you know? You can measure certain, you know, when, when you're impacting and when you're connecting, but you can't really see it, touch it, feel it when it's happening. You can, you know, do data analysis, blah, 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 but, yeah, so it, it, no, I, I get where you're coming from and, and I don't know, I mean, Jeremy is, been involved in that contract, correct? So, do you want to speak to anything from your perspective on that? Is there anything that you have to offer up?
Yeah, not really. I mean, you know, the contract is basically what you guys kind of discussed with them as far as the scope of service, so I didn't really change that much. You know, the one thing I suggested adding in there was just a termination clause so that if we're not satisfied, it was, we could terminate it, you know, within, I think it's 30 days notice, right, is what we ended up putting in there? Oh, yeah. Yeah, so.
So, so on that, can I ask a question? Because it's a lump sum contract, but is it on a 30-day?
So, so right now, it's on 30 days. We, you know, it's divided up 30 days.
So, if we give a 30-day notice, we're, that's the end of the contract. We're not obligated to.
Yeah, the, the way their contract was originally written, it was basically a one-year contract for a lump sum with no way to terminate it. Now, again, I mean, part of the problem is, no, problem is the wrong word. I, I think it, it would be hard to quantify it, probably in the first year to know really what you're getting. You know, it's probably going to take a year to really be able to say, okay, that what he's doing for us is, is working enough to justify the cost. But I think after that, at least, at some point, if, if the council felt like we're just not seeing the benefit, you know, we can't quantify the benefit to the point where we think it's, it's worth the money, then you could terminate it.
Well, Mayor, if I could, I, I talked to one of our council members this afternoon because we, we used to have a lobbyist a long time ago. I wasn't in the position I am now, so I, I told, it was actually Councilmember Gray, I hope you don't mind me saying, I, you know.
I don't mind you saying it at all.
He had some questions and, and so, we, we talked it over and, you know, one of the things that I, ours is, because I wasn't close to the situation, I don't know what that lobbyist got. I know what they were paid because I was in finance and I was, you know, seeing the, the checks go out for them, but as far as what they got, I wasn't privy to that per se. All I know is that I believe that contract ended because the council at the time felt like they weren't getting the value that they, that equaled the expense. So, again, I think, you know, splitting that fee up, you know, monthly and then the 30-day out, as well as discussions I've had with Mr. Stewart about recording, I know he, he talked about that here as well, that he would tailor that to whatever they, help, help the council to be, to be informed and satisfied as to what work was being conducted. I think it's, it would have to be tailored based on, you know, feedback from the council.
My question on that is how, how are we actually going to do that? Because once we approve a contract, there's not going to be any way that the council gives feedback or input or requests.
Well, he's going to report on a regular basis and so, there will be communication on a regular basis to.
Right, so I, I, I'm even just thinking, I'm just thinking logistics, right? So, take Mr. Stewart aside, how will we decide what projects we want to prioritize and how we're going to send that down his pipeline?
The, well, we can certainly, you know, throw out whatever, whatever we've got on wish list, right? But, but ultimately, he, UDOT and the legislature is, they're going to tell us.
Right, and I get that from that perspective, but I'm thinking more along the lines of some of the things like policy where.
Like.
Hey, would you keep your ear to the ground? I hear someone's trying to target us on our code.
Sure.
Can you go fight for us and, and put in a, you know, what, whatever that looks like? That's what I'm, I'm talking about.
Yes, well, okay.
How, how do we say, you know, how do we say, how do we decide what project is going to be top priority if there's opportunity to choose?
He's not here to speak to this and I, I explored this with him a bit because, speaking of UFA, and, and I think I mentioned this to all of you if I, if I have and I apologize, but, so, UFA has a, a, a report, a reporting that happens leading up to the legislative session and like, these are the bills that are being written and formulated, these are the ones we like, these are the ones we don't like. And then, they'll have updates as, as, as things move forward and they'll say, okay, this bill was totally rewritten, we didn't like it before, but now we like it. And, and then during the session, they'll report, okay, this one died, this one was approved or is, or is being approved. They'll even, you know, give an alert, like similar to what ULCT does, if like, no, this is really scary, we really don't like it, but it's moving forward and you guys might want to make some phone calls. And then ultimately, they will do a wrap-up. Okay, this is what the result of that was. And so, I explored that model with him and he admitted that's not something he has generally done, but certainly something he could do because he's there, he's, he's, he's in the mix and, and we can, I don't know, we can, we can experiment with that a bit and decide, you know, exactly what we want out of that, but he is capable and willing to do that. Maybe some of the details might need to be worked out, but Paul, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things that I experienced this last legislative session was that retail incentives bill.
Yes.
And Cameron Deal, the president of the league, came to me, said, hey, actually, Mark Christiansen in Saratoga Springs, he's like, I want you guys to help me with this. And so, we were weighing in all the time on this, but what, what we didn't have is someone that was there talking on our behalf. We would communicate, not, not to say that ULCT didn't do a great job because they did, it could have been worse. But I think that this is something that through those, that bill tracking that the, the league does, through any conversations you have with council members in other cities that may be apprised of some of the things, you guys could, you know, talk with the mayor, talk, you know, talk to each other about, you know, the concerns you have about certain bills and then mayor or I or whoever could, could say, Mr. Stewart, we're concerned about this. What can you do to help us out with this? We're worried this is going to go sideways. We know the league's working on it too, but what can you help us out with? That's, that's one of the things I think could be a, a huge asset for us.
It, it really could because in that regard, like, I, I try to spend as much time up there as, at the Capitol as I can, but it's limited and, and whoever I talk to knows I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be there tomorrow, you know, at his office and, you know, saying, hey, what's up with this? That, you know, I'm limited on the time I can spend up there and, you know, and may, I don't, I don't mean to be rude or anything, but there's, there's probably a little bit of, hey, I talked to a lot of mayors and you're just another one of them, you know? So, and, and I think, Councilmember Gray, I think you mentioned this, I mean, that's part of a lobbyist is it, it, it shows you are in the game, you are serious and he's up there all the time. So, where, you know, we can't be there all the time, as much as we try, so, yeah, but a lot of it will, yeah, it, it's, it's, it's that communication and, and manage, you know, managing expectations and, and that back and forth that is, that is an important element because some things are going to be happening quickly, other things are going to be long drawn out affairs, so.
So, we talked about, like, like I feel like this is something we've talked about for a while, we put it in the budgets, like this would be nice, let's, let's move forward. So, I guess the, what, what, the next part of that, because you've heard my first, is this something we're doing because it'll be nice and maybe we could find some benefit? Or are there some specific tasks that we're saying, we need this guy because we want X, Y, and Z accomplished and this is why we're doing it and it's absolutely, and then I think to kind of caveat on what Councilmember Curtis was saying, you mentioned we talk amongst ourselves and then we can tell you and you can tell them to watch for this or that. I think the, the concern collectively is that it's collective. I don't want Paul to task him with what Paul wants, I don't want the mayor to task him with what the mayor wants, I don't want Colby to task him with what Colby wants. I want him to go after what the council feels is the best for the city. That's why we're a council.
Right, and, and to piggyback on that, what's our, you know, we talked about communication needs to be key, but we don't have a process for that to.
That, that's kind of what I'm getting, so the only way to do that is in a meeting.
How do we decide this is, is an important project to us?
He could, he could report, you know, to council.
Right, you see, that's what I'm asking for is, is how do we, I don't even need the report, but more of a.
A consensus on what it is.
Or he can say, these are the things that, that are actually attainable, achievable, which path do you want me to go down or what's the vision for what we're trying to accomplish?
Sure.
Something like that, but, but that's not really in the contract and so, I don't know how we would accomplish something like that because there's no requirement for him to give a report to the council or for him to give any specific report. It's, none of that's in.
Or to take direction from the body as a whole.
Or to take a direction on.
I, I would assume it would come through either the mayor or Paul, but how do we get that channel?
Well, I know he, because I've talked to him specifically about this because of speaking with, with all of you, that he's willing to do whatever you guys want him to do. So, I think that certainly.
I think that's where I was going.
We could have a city administrator updates and then a lobbyist update every.
Quarter.
Month, a quarter, I don't know, or maybe more often.
During session.
During session if he can make it down here away from the hill, but, you know, I think that could be where you guys discuss, hey, we're concerned about, or, you know, to your point, Councilmember Gray, if, Councilmember Curtis is, you know, Gray, you're here, Mr. Stewart, I'm concerned about bill number, whatever, that's going to task us with this and I don't think that's fair. And that discussion takes place here, I mean, LeAnn and Finn can correct me if I'm wrong, but if, you know, the, the, the rest of the council is like, yeah, same, same ditto. I think that's.
Right.
She's got it.
I think, I think we have a hand raised. Finn, is that, is that you?
Yeah, you know, a lot of times, things are moving quickly during the legislative session, but I think that you as a council could pass a resolution and determine the items that you feel are important and include that in that resolution, how often you'd like your lobbyist to report to you and/or include it with, with Paul's updates. There's going to be times where things will have to happen quickly and you're going to just have to trust that those that are working with the legislature during the session can communicate and get some direction, but I would recommend that if there are items that are important to you, that you pass a resolution and specify what those are.
Well, you know, I tend to avoid resolution or code to, to something like this because then it's, would it not be better than the contract?
Resolutions are not code. Ordinances are code. Resolutions are.
Right, but I mean, isn't it something that'd be more contractual? Does a resolution die when the contract dies?
Resolutions are generally short-term in nature or.
So, does it have a termination?
You could put a termination into it, but what, what I'm trying to get at is, is I don't, what I don't want, and maybe that's where I haven't been very specific in what I'm saying, I don't want to make this like, you got to come and give us a report every five seconds. That's not what I'm looking for and I'm not looking for you not to be able to do something or you not to be able to do something. I'm just looking for, how is it that the body formally gives some kind of direction to move in a direction?
I've got an idea.
That's, that's what I'm talking about is, is, we're just trying to say, hey, go down this path and then report back if that path is a dumb path, report back, you know, that kind of thing. But it, it's not to try to stop any immediate action from going or.
All we have to do is throw it on the agenda and, and make it happen.
Well, we've got a, is it called a visioning meeting in August? We've got a visioning meeting where we're going to talk about what we want to see for the city. My, my thought is, I don't know that we know how to direct him and I don't know that he knows exactly what we need, but if he was to be a part of that visioning meeting, I think that he could see what we're trying to do and that he could come and say, I think I could help you do X, Y, and Z. And then he could, you know, so together, we could determine that. And, and I was kind of thinking of the model that we're supposed to do with community, Communities That Care, I believe is what it's called, and that is that at the beginning of the year, they come in and they say, here's our objectives for the year, here's what we're going to try and do, and then they're supposed to report back at least mid-year, here's, here's how we're doing on those objectives, and at the end of the year, here's our results and here's our new objectives for the coming year. I think we should at least have that as a formal reporting and then I feel like he should report and have communications with Paul and the mayor and we should be able to get more detailed reporting in our, in our private conversations, you know.
Or via email.
Yeah, or with an email. And just one other thing, I mean, the mayor is talking about bill tracking, like ULCT does with, with all of their employees and it sounds like this guy is a little bit more proactive than that. That's a little reactive. I feel like if we had something that came up with, with the ULCT, because ULCT is going to do that for us and if we found something that affects us differently than the rest of the cities, we could say, hey, will you help us with this, like you were talking about? But I feel like he's going to be more proactive and he's going to go after the things that we want, not just react to the bills that are being drafted.
Mayor, can I, wait, sorry.
Go, go ahead.
Oh, I was just, I was just saying, I, I, I agree with Carolyn. I think that that's, I think that our strategic planning meeting would be a great place to, to help communicate some of those, those big vision items that we do want him to work on and, yeah, I agree with her reporting ideas as well. I think, I think she's on the right track.
Can I interject a thought here too? I really like the fact that, you know, I, I, I know we've, you know, we're concerned about, you know, how many clients does he have and how much time can he allocate to us, but of all the clients he has, one that I think is a real asset is MAG. That's, that's, that's not a detractor at all. So, yeah, he'll, he'll be dialed in and he'll be able to guide us, counsel us and, you know, tell us, tell us what's up, so. Yeah, I, you know, and, and as we, as we move along, whether it's through a visioning process or whatever, or just things that we, you know, be, become aware of that are either problems or, you know, like, you know, if we want to, if we want to sponsor a bill or if we're concerned about a bill, then it definitely will want to, those, some of those be reactive, some of those be proactive, but, yeah, funding is, funding, funding is, I mean, that's, that's a biggie, right, for, for a growing city, so that will always be, be a part of it and, and, you know, just like Councilmember Love, you, you know, you have. Love, you, you have copies of the 2050 Plan. And, so really, in a lot of cases for us, it's not identifying a project, project's already been identified. We want to move it up, right? We don't want it just 2050, or just 2030, we might, you know, we're trying to move that timeline. And, yeah, a lot of that is going to be simply repeating our story over and over and over again. And as, as a lobbyist is spending time with the legislative leadership, questions can be asked, well, what about this, what about that? And there will be, I fully expect there will be some realizations in those conversations that, well, if Eagle Mountain wants this, then I need that. And he's going to say, yeah, they're perfectly willing to do that. They've been on board with, they've been doing that. So, we just, you know, we need to improve this cooperation. I really expect that there will be those kind of epiphany type of conversations going on. But anyway, I didn't even mean to take that much time, but.
So, to go back to where I started, and I think Brett actually is waiting patiently to comment, are there some specific things that he's already, I know the one thing that he's, he showed us some things that we're going to capitalize on, but are we entering an agreement with the hopes and dreams that something great will come of it, or are there specific tasks that he's hitting the ground running tomorrow once this is signed? Or is it more of just that this is the direction we're going?
Are you ready? I can, I can comment, but.
And this is hard for me, because I've heard of one, but it hasn't even been mentioned.
You've heard of what?
I've heard of one potential project, and it hasn't been mentioned. Like.
Project?
Yeah, I mean, the goal supposedly is to have him work on SR 73, correct?
Yeah, well, he's aware of that, because I've made him aware of that already. And so, I know he has given me other, he's communicated other things that he's already started exploring, too. So, I just don't, I don't know that I want to get into specifics here, but, but yeah, I, one of the things I mentioned to Councilmember Love during the break is that, and I've already mentioned to Mr. Stewart, that if council decides to hire him, that one of the first things I think we need to do is give him an extensive tour of the city. Get him here, drive him around everything, have him see where is the growth, where, have him get familiar with the transportation master plan, both what is in existence and what is, you know, being changed up. And so that he can start, you know, I know Mayor mentioned that, you know, there's a possibility that, you know, you as a body say, well, we want this. And because he's familiar with the city, he may say, well, I agree that you guys need that, but I think I can actually get funding for this right now. And I'd like to start working on that. I'll keep this in my, you know, on my future to-do list when I think an opportunity arises that I think I can fit that into, but I think I can get you this for this other project right now. And those are the things that I think that he, you know, he mentioned that the infrastructure experience he's had in other cities, I think that's where he's going to try to match what he knows and what he sees from the legislature with what he sees and knows that the city needs. And I think we do, we know we have a lot of different needs, and I think he's going to try to sit there and say, okay, what can we get now?
Right.
He's always going to be out there and knows. And I think that that has to be a fluid process. The hard thing for me is, is like, for example, there's kind of a little bit of an understanding that maybe one of the things that would like to be done is SR 73. But the question is, where did that come from? Because the body didn't come up with.
It comes from UDOT.
Well, but that's, that's the kind of thing that, that gives me pause, is because who's giving this direction?
UDOT.
And no one's ever told me that. And so, do you understand why that's sometimes frustrating for me, is where, where are we coming up with these directives to give somebody when the body hasn't spoken on that?
There isn't a directive, not from here.
I think it's pretty obvious that we did want him to work on SR 73, that was a goal.
Well, I know that.
At least it was an idea, and that's what I'm trying, what process do we have to say that that's going to be or not? Like, I might be on board with that goal, but.
The big one on that one, is it's going to happen either way, whether we want it or not. His point is that he can move it forward. Because UDOT's doing that road, it's already on the agenda to be done. It's whether or not, is it helpful to do it sooner? So it's not a matter of director, it's a matter of just moving an existing project that would be beneficial. Because this is going to get.
Well, and we can have, we don't have to have that discussion now, because I do think that there are downsides to that project, but.
Well, I think there's other projects that could be more effective, right, we'll say that.
Absolutely, that's what I'm talking about, is if, if he's going to have.
But those aren't even on the plan, and so we've got to get him on the plan, and then.
Right, that's what I'm talking about, is if we have certain things, and if the answer is, that's not even on the table, that's fine. It's just, what's the process by which we are going to go through in order to decide if it's going to be on there or not, or what's the, what's the priority?
We can get him in here, you can ask him all of those questions, and give him all of your perspective.
And I, I don't want it to end up being this, well, that's not important to Colby, but four other people think it's important, right? That's what I want to get at, is maybe kind of like what Finn was saying, is a resolution. I don't want it to be some vague, non-binding visioning. I'm just going to say that. Because if it's a vague, non-binding visioning, then it's, then it's not.
What do we hope to bind, though?
I'm just trying to find ways where we all know exactly what is happening, and we've agreed to it roughly. That's, that's all I'm trying to get at, is that mechanism.
What if we said as part of the contract, that we will discuss results and objectives at least twice a year?
Sure.
I mean, that way, it's not, you know, so prescriptive that we can't have some flexibility, but, you know, it's in there.
Or what about that meet with the body every year is fine. I don't need the results to come, I'm perfectly happy if he has a written report semi-annually to Paul, and he distributes it, that, that doesn't bother me.
Well, I think we could talk about objectives, too. I think we could do both things at the same time. I was just going to say that I think that, and somebody mentioned it, and I don't remember who, sorry, but I feel like with the legislature, there's, there's things that you have a chance with, and there's things that are, you know, you don't even want to go down that road, you know, depending on the atmosphere or the priorities of the leadership. And so, I think having an entire list of things that he can work on, and he tries to just find the opportunities is the best way to go about it. I even, because just because some things are a number one priority, doesn't mean it's something he's going to be able to accomplish. So I think we'll have to be a little bit flexible in that regard, in my mind.
So, sorry, and if I just address, I'm trying to figure out what, you know, what you're talking about, Councilmember Curtis. I know there is a developer and a lobbyist for that developer that have been working on SR 73, is that what you're talking about? Because I have not had any conversations with Dave Stewart on SR 73.
No, I'm just trying to understand how we're going to go about this process, because from my perspective, I, I just hear that this project is out there in the ether, and I immediately say, well, I know a developer's trying to lobby for that, why are we hiring a lobbyist to do the exact same thing that a developer wants, right? And then I wonder, and you've, you've answered that question to my satisfaction, that UDOT, oh, okay, well, I'm happy with, I, for me, it's just, it, if anyone could take anything from what I'm saying, I'm just talking process. I just want to know, if the body wants to have something on that list, what's the mechanism that we do that by? And then.
Yeah, no, we can.
You know, because I'm just thinking about, like, when you look at it from my perspective, all I am and all I can be is a purse strings person. I give money to the lobbyist, and then after that, I have no say whatsoever. That's, it's not about trust, it's not about anything. It's just, from my perspective as a legislator, I don't really have a lot of.
So let me, tell me.
Input. Does that make sense?
Okay, let me, let me feed back to you, what I think I'm hearing is, yeah, you, certainly, you don't want this to be an arm wrestle all along through the process, you want some, an easy process that, that we can initiate, and it rolls out, and you're constantly plugged into that, because that way, you can report to your constituents that this was money well spent, and this is why, right? So.
And the one thing I don't want is, I don't want to be involved in the intimate details of what's going on. That's not my job, I'm a legislator. I just want to be like, these things are important to me.
Yeah.
Okay, that gets given to the person, and he works on those things, and then we get report, that, I'm just looking for that mechanism. And I think that we've talked about some of the ways that maybe we can get to that mechanism.
If I may, Mayor, I think Councilmember Curtis, even more broadly than that, it's, these things are important to us.
Right, not to me, to the.
To us, to us as a, us as a city, to this body in general, in a majority fashion, right? And I just, I want to say this, I, I mean, we, we put money in our budget for a lobbyist. I think it makes sense for Eagle Mountain to hire a lobbyist, I think there's a lot that we can benefit from by doing that. I hear Councilmember Curtis, and I share some of his concerns, if I'm going to be completely frank, about how is this direction going to be given, and, and are we as a group, as a body, going to be, and I don't, I'm not talking about even just council by itself, or council with the mayor, we, as staff, as the council, as the mayor, how are we going to weigh into that so that we are working together to accomplish some very specific goals that may or may not be able to be accomplished by this lobbyist, right? And they may or may not be able to happen in the, in the order that we'd like to see them happen. So we need to be flexible with that. I really like some of Carolyn's solutions. And I guess my question to you, Councilmember Curtis, is, would you feel that, that the opportunity that council has to create, or even to introduce a resolution on the fly during any council meeting, should we choose to, to give some very specific direction about something, or pull it back if we feel like it's going in a direction that we're uncomfortable? Would that be enough of a legislative influence for you to, to gain some comfort there?
Yes, I think that that's enough in what we've talked about. I do think that I'd be more, I'd feel more comfortable if we put some kind of, no, no less than semi-annual written reports, preferably quarterly, be made to the city administrator and distributed to mayor and council.
Would anybody on the council have a problem with that?
Because that, that would be something very, that he could accomplish, it doesn't overly prescribe him to do that too frequently. Twice a year, you send some written report to Paul, and Paul can give it to the rest of us, something like that.
Yeah, I, I think a written quarterly report is, that's, I don't think that's asking too much.
Yeah.
I think a written quarterly report is good, but I would like to have at least one in-person.
Oh, yeah.
Meeting to talk about.
I would actually like to have more, where we get.
At least one.
Right, and I think that that's good, too, and that might be appropriate to do a month after the report, because then we can review what he's been working on, and then ask questions and say, hey, tell me about, I don't know, like that, but once again, I'm not interested in, in, on a day-to-day, I need to find out if Colby's okay, no, that's not what I want. Like, that's not my job, you guys are, this is, I want you to operate, I'm not trying to get into that. It's, it's just about process and just making sure that the ducks are in a row, so that, if that makes sense, what I'm trying to accomplish.
Totally, totally. I think I'm understanding. When I brought this up to him, this reporting cycle, he said, happy to accommodate whatever frequency you want to do. He said, the only thing I ask is if we're in legislative session, I'm probably going to need to do this remotely, from the Capitol. Which I said, hey, you know what, that's even better.
And I, I think it might be beneficial to have, you know, a random report in August may not be as beneficial as one report at the beginning and ending of the session, if that makes sense, or something of that, of that nature. I like that, if we would include. Right. And if everyone's amenable to that, I think that that would be helpful, because then we have an opportunity to be like, well, I thought we were all on board on that. And then, and then, Colby doesn't feel like what was important was ignored, it's that, oh, okay, I, now I understand that there was nuance, right? You know, because that's helpful to me, or everyone else can weigh in and be like, no, I think that you're misinterpreting what we all discussed, right? That kind of thing. And it just keeps us, it keeps, you talked about communication is important, that keeps us communicating and making sure that we all understand what the goal was, and if we're on the road to that goal.
Yeah, and, and I don't think that that would shock him one bit. I think him, you know, showing up, you know, either it's remotely or in person, and every council member being able to grill him, I don't think that's going to be foreign. Look, look who he talks to every day. That's like, you guys are not, we're the easy folks he's going to deal with.
I like the idea of having it as part of his contract, the more I think about it, because then instead of something that Finn or some other staff members have put on their calendar to reach out and to get them in here, maybe that could be his responsibility to be proactive on the reporting and even on the meeting.
And then I imagine next year, when we go to review the contract and re-up it, we're like, oh, did we get some reports? Did we get, you know, there's, there's a mechanism for accountability. And then it gives us a mechanism to make sure that we're adequately giving vision to him as a group. So, anyway, thank you for working with me through that. I was trying to express something, and I was getting frustrated because I couldn't communicate what it was I was trying to actually express. So, I appreciate it. Because I didn't want it to come off as me just trying to be difficult, that's not, it was something else, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, yeah, I think we're perfectly happy.
Mayor, could we, could we ask Councilmember Burnham, I'd just like to hear her thoughts. I haven't heard a lot from her.
Yeah, Councilmember Burn.
Just curious if she feels, you know, any differently.
Tell us we're all wet. Tell us, what do you think?
You're all wet. No, I like, I like the reporting requirement, just so that we, we have a, something that we can count on, that we know that we're going to get that report. I think that's helpful. And, yeah, I, I think that the discussion's headed in the right direction in terms of just making sure that, that he hears what the council as a whole is trying to say, not, you know, not, like, like Colby's saying, not individual members, but that, that we can express as a whole what we, what we want him to accomplish, and he can tell us whether we're up in the night on whether that's even a possibility, and whether that's worth his time, but at least we can communicate that.
Yeah, and I would imagine, you know, during those slower times, you know, if, you know, if we're having a visioning conference or whatever, that he'd be more than happy to spend more time with us, and, you know, really evaluating those things with us. But yeah, during, you know, leading up to and during session, it's going to be busy, busy, so.
If I could make one last comment, I'd be quiet, I promise. I really appreciate Paul and Jeremy working on the contract to create that termination clause, because that gives me a level of comfort that says, if, if we find, okay, Jeremy, you get the credit, is that if we do find a level of dissatisfaction or discomfort, we're not tied into anything long-term. It's not like we're fronting the money all at once, and we don't get a chance to reevaluate that on a monthly basis if we choose to, right? And so, I appreciate, you know, the forethought in that, and recognizing that, that we may need a mechanism to escape the contract if we're uncomfortable. I didn't get the impression at all that Mr. Stewart is not the kind of person we want representing us. I mean, I got quite the opposite. I think he'll represent us in a good way.
And to your point, I actually think that it, it's a testament to, to what he's trying to accomplish, that he'd be willing to do that on a month-to-month, because he could bring us something. And, and I know, if he brings us something, we're all going to be in favor of continuing to pay the person, but there could be a risk to him. And, and so, I, I think that that's a testament to the fact that he wants to build a long-term relationship and accomplish the goals of our, our community.
And to that effect, Councilmember Curtis, he texted me and he said, you know, I feel like maybe they're concerned about the level, or the number of clients I have. He said, I'm looking for a long-term relationship. He's like, I'm not worried. And I, you know, and he did bring up that termination clause, and he'd already, he was okay with the month-to-month, pay, you know, the payment, you know, one twelfth every month of the agreed-upon amount. So I think that he's, he's incentivized to do this very vast, because what he wants to accomplish for us, so, to that point.
Yeah. So, do we, do we feel like we need to settle on a communication cycle tonight, or just give direction to, get it in this ballpark, and then, then get it more detailed?
Does anyone have a problem with four and two? With the quarterly and then twice a year? Is that a problem?
Well, if I could just make a suggestion, and, you know, you guys do, do what you feel is best, but maybe if you want, if four reports a year are adequate, I would just say probably four reports a year. I wouldn't say quarterly, because then he can tailor that to, because like he said, if he's, if it's July and everybody's on vacation, but that's the month he's supposed to give a report, is that really the best use of his time, our time, your time? And then I would also say, all. Your time, and then I would also say, al- also with the visits, if you, if you want him, if it's only one, great, but if it's two visits a year, I would just say two visits a year, because then also that can be tailored, maybe it's, maybe it's our visioning conference in August or September before the legislative session begins, and then one after legislative sessions ended, where he can talk about how it went.
That's why we keep you around, Paul, I like that.
What's that?
That's why we keep you.
And is that, is that the goal, is the goal to have us do visioning? Uh, I, I, I think it would be better overall to not do it in February, where we're trying to do the budget, if that makes sense, so we split it up, is that the goal, that we're trying to accomplish?
Well, and again, it's up to you, up to you as the body, I, I think what we were, uh, thinking would be a possibility is doing part of it, as part of the budget, and then do what we're doing this year where we have the follow-up and we, we kinda say, okay, what did we not get accomplished as a council, what did we not convey to staff? What do we still feel is undone or has not been addressed, and then you kinda square everything away in the fall, plus, and give it, council opportunity to really say to Mr. Stewart, okay, here's where we're at, you know, we passed our budget, we talked about visioning back when we started the process, here's our concerns, good luck, you know, kind of a thing, so, go get them.
I like that.
No, no, my, my thought, if I remembered the visiting thing, visioning thing, was we're supposed to have our objectives in the fall, so that when we hit budget time, we know what we're doing.
Right.
But I'm, I'm great with that, I, I mean, I feel like we can give directions, Jeremy, Jeremy could change the contract, I don't think we're being overly prescriptive about it, it could be easily written in there and we could move it, move forward tonight.
Agreed. Okay. I'm happy with that.
I'll give it a shot, um, I propose that the Eagle Mountain City Council, um, it's not, approve an agreement, approve, approve a lobbyist services agreement with Legislative Executive Counseling LLC um, for a hundred thousand dollars, um, adding in a reporting requirement of four times a year and in-person meetings twice a year to discuss objectives and direction.
Second, and the reporting, is that like a written report to the, or do you wanna just leave that?
We could say, I would amend my motion to say written or in-person reporting.
And this is just another question too, is it fair to say a minimum of two? In-person, we might come three, but we don't wanna limit it to two, right, where it's only two?
Yeah, we can say a, a minimum of four times in-person or written reporting and a minimum of two times, um.
Rather a minimum than an exact.
Do you have a problem with that being in-person or?
The, the objectives?
Or, I don't know that I care that if it's remote, like a, you'd rather have in-person?
I, I consider this in-person, it's not written communication, like, in-person or virtual, can we say virtual? Just because there's the back and forth that you don't have in a written report.
Okay.
And, and he may come back and offer like, okay, I see which direction you're trying to go.
Could, could we do it this way instead and then we just amend it, that's fine, right?
The only other question would probably be, yeah.
Yeah, I'd still, I think I had a second, right, yeah.
The, the, just a verbiage question, and, and as long as you're good with it, I don't care, but you said counseling as consulting, right? Does, does it matter, did we get the point? When you read it, you said counseling.
Oh, consulting, sorry.
Same thing, we're good, you got the intent, right?
So, yeah, just to reiterate one more time, that was for written?
Minimum.
Minimum for written reports and two in-person or virtual.
For written reporting and, to in-person or virtual discussions.
And do you?
Yeah.
And I, I guess the understanding is that the written can be to Paul, right, it doesn't have to be to a city council, right? It doesn't.
They don't all get here.
Right, right, I, I just don't want him to feel like he has to like, deliver a written report to all of us individually, I don't want him to be under that.
You don't want him to be in house.
I, I'd happily, but I just don't want him to, like, you can send it through one place and, and the city, and well.
Donna, that's been a great conversation about a motion, are you on board with the motion? I mean, not on board, you understand the motion.
Yes, yes. I, I understand the motion and I, I think that, um, everyone's worked really well together to get it there, so, yeah.
Okay, as I understand it, we have a motion by Councilmember Love, a second by Councilmember Curtis, is that right? And everyone's clear on that, okay, all right, so we move forward to a vote, shall we do it? Let's start with you, Councilmember Love.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Burnham?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, all right, the other item we pulled off of the consent agenda is nine C, master infrastructure agreement, Stadium LLC, and I, I don't think this is heavy lifting, I think we, uh.
Yeah, just whatever the change was and.
Change in date twelve thirty-one.
Exactly, from, from eight thirty. So, go ahead, make the motion.
Mayor, I move that the Eagle Mountain City Council approve a master infrastructure agreement with Stadium LLC as drafted and contained in our packet with one change, that the, that the date be changed to twelve thirty-one twenty-two.
For the booster infiltration, for the booster infiltration portion of the agreement.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Wright, a second by Councilmember Gray, anybody need any further clarification on that? Leanne, you good, everybody else good? Okay, all right, let's go to a vote, let's start with you, Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Burnham?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, okay, I think that concludes our consent agenda items, all right? Okay, so we just have the, one, oh, there it is. And this is, this is a public hearing, so, item fourteen A, uh, is an ordinance of Eagle Mountain City, Utah, amending the Eagle Mountain City Municipal Code, section one seven point one five point zero three zero, planning commission organization.
Mayor, the staff report says it's not a public hearing, did I, is, is there something not right with that? Are we here? I just wanted to see which, which is, which is correct, should be.
If we listen to it as a public hearing, let's just have a public hearing, so.
It, it's titled under public hearing, but.
Where it says public hearing on the left side in the column that says, no, so which of those, right, that's what I'm asking? Is it required?
It was noticed.
It, it's not, let's just have a public hearing.
Okay.
Make it easy.
That way if someone, someone says, wait, you know, I held my comments, all the huge crowd here tonight. Okay. All right. Do we have anyone that would like to speak, are, are you here to speak on this matter? I'm, I'm sorry, let's, um. Oh, that, that got approved already. Okay. Sorry, it, it was just on our consent agenda, so it got approved as part of the consent agenda.
Excuse me, are you the applicant? Oh, okay, no, I, I was concerned that you were here to speak against it or something, so.
No, 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 yeah, I'm the one who's gonna talk about that. Tell me what we're doing?
Come on up, what the heck?
So I'm a little out of turn then, I, I apologize.
Go ahead, introduce yourself.
So, I am Lee Olson, I work with Utah Rob Bend, thanks for letting me spend a couple minutes with you tonight. Um, we, um, have been in business for twenty years and primarily, uh, most of this time, we've been a wireless internet provider, so we've installed antennas on businesses and homes, pointed them to tower sites, that's what, how we provided internet service up to this point. And, uh, once the pandemic hit, um, it was a no-shoot experience for us, just like it was for everyone else. Um, people needed more internet service, um, not more internet service, but faster internet service. And so we've retooled, we've gotten into fiber, um, we've been primarily focused on the Wasatch back, so that's Heber City, Park City areas, along with Ogden Valley up in Weber County, and now we're making the transition over to the Wasatch front. And we've started working with several developers, we have a pretty big project over here with D.R. Horton, with Eagle Point, uh, putting some conduit in their open utility trenches, but in order to expand from that throughout the city, we do need a franchise agreement, just to streamline our access into the utilities, that, uh, you have as an asset, um, it just helps us streamline that process when we apply for permits, it just speeds everything up a little bit for us.
Okay.
Questions, concerns?
We already passed it, too late if we had.
I was gonna say, you're, you're no longer in need of a franchise agreement, you have one.
How's, how's that for results?
Yeah, well, it's, it's no brainer, but, uh, just in case, I'm here to answer your questions, so.
All right, we don't, we don't always work quickly, but on that, we did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, we'll come back to item fourteen A, as I mentioned, uh, I, I, I don't need to read it again, do I? Uh, let's turn time over to Jeremy Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, um, this came to the council at the last meeting, so there's probably not much explanation that needs to be, uh, said about it, but these are just changes to the uh, planning commission, uh, section of our code. Uh, the primary change is to add an alternate member to the planning commission. The, since the last meeting, there's just some changes on, uh, the term of that member and, um, and then there's, um, changes on the appointment process for all planning commission members, just to follow the same process that we use for advisory board positions, uh, and that's basically it.
Okay, all right, so, just a little bit of additional history, it's my understanding, this is before my time, I'm pretty sure, uh, that an alternate, uh, planning commissioner was attempted. Uh, didn't quite work out as planned, but we believe we have remedied the, uh, the fail points, uh, to fully engage that individual, uh, and, and, and keep them involved, so that they don't feel like they're just wasting their time, uh, so, uh.
I, I have some questions, but I'm worried if we should do a public hearing before we forget.
We can get that out of the way, if you like, okay, all right, let's open up a public hearing. It is now eight forty-four, public hearing is open. Leanne, who, who, who do we have? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, is it still eight forty-four, yeah, Mike?
Did you mean seeing no one?
Seeing no one, yeah, well, so, public hearing is now closed, since, um, since we have no one that would like to speak on this, so, Councilmember Curtis?
Yes, my, actually, my question is to you, if you still have any concerns that need to be remedied from here.
Um, I think, I think we're good, now, I had hoped to get out, you know, an email with just kind of conversation, okay, this is what I'm seeing, this is, uh, and, uh, give everybody a chance to, um, input on that, unfortunately, I never got around to doing that. Um, I, I can read through some of my notes, uh, but there's really two parts, so, really what we are, really what this item is about is the alternate, um, uh, planning commissioner, right, Jeremy? But it does cite the other, the other piece of code, right?
Yeah, that's correct, I mean, the, I, I mean, I think that the biggest change here is adding the alternate member to the planning commission, and again, the, the appointment process is the same, just following that same process that we, that we implemented for the advisory board positions, um, which, which is basically, um, a ten-day notice, now, I know, talking to the mayor, the, the intent is just to actually comply with that requirement by, by posting these permanently, like having.
Yes, we want, we want a permanent posting, cause one of the difficulties that kinda turned the appointment into a pressure cooker, trying to hit deadlines and everything, was, uh, it was just a tight turnaround, uh, trying to hit all of those, and, and, um, so, if we can have a ongoing noticing for these positions, I believe, it'll do a couple of things. One, it will build our applicant pool, uh, and, and many people, when they apply, they apply for more than one position anyway, and it gives us time to kinda get to know them a little bit, we're not trying to like, okay, the next deadline, we gotta wrap this up by this time, blah, 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 and we gotta fill this seat, et cetera, et cetera, and, uh, and oftentimes then, like, you know, many of the people that apply, like, I, I don't know these people, so, uh, by, um, gi- so, I, I spoke to Jeremy about this, whether, uh, this ought to be part of code or not, he, he felt like, eh, just keep it as it is, because we fulfill it if we, if we're ongoing, cause we're doing more than ten days, right? Um, so, uh, I mean, that's.
That, that's what, that's what he offered.
So, I, I, I guess to that, I mean, if it would make you feel more comfortable, I don't have a problem adding a part about a rotating noticing in there, if that makes you feel more comfortable, I know that this has been a pain for, point for many of us, and I would rather us, I'm hoping that maybe we've gotten to the point where we can negotiate something that can, that can work, um, I don't personally have a problem with the rotating notice. Does anyone have a problem with that idea of a rotating notice?
Not me.
So then we just make that as that code is coming back, I mean, you see four people here, Councilmember Burnham, do you have a problem with that?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, well, and, and does that remove some of the pain points that, that I know that you, Councilmember Burnham, and, and the mayor have had, does that help?
Um, for, for me, it was, it, it, it's just more, it's, I had a conversation with Jeremy about what rises to the level of, of, you know, taking power away from the mayor, and from that conversation, I, I feel like I've come to the conclusion that this is, this is, doesn't rise to that level. I obviously, I've said I'd rather see this as a policy and not in code, but it's good policy and I am fine with making it code and, and I do like the idea that the mayor was saying of just, you know, having that rotate, all, you know, a continual thing, so, so I'm good with it, is basically what I'm saying, I think I'm circular talking now.
Thank, thank you, I, I just, I, I don't know, I, is that something that we can, I know we've talked about that, that will be forthcoming as well, I know that there's still discussions, right?
To revisit the code itself?
Right, I just wanna make sure that we all understand that that's going to be part of it, cause I don't, I don't want us to move forward on this with that assumption and then us not all agree to that, we have a fairly good agreement and I want that to be as smooth as possible for that part of the code.
Yeah, no, I, I, I definitely appreciate that, um, so, let me, let me look at my notes here.
That, that's how I feel, I feel like we're not that far apart on the, the board appointment process, and at this point, it's a matter of, you know, crossing some t's and dotting some i's and making it follow what we're actually trying to do, and, you know, one of the things that Councilmember Curtis had suggested is adding some definitions that make it more clear, that this does apply to planning commissions, so that when, um, when this new code that we're passing tonight points you there, you're not confused going, well, this is talking about boards and not commissions, so, just again, dotting the, the i's and crossing the t's, um, but I think we're there.
But on that, so, just, uh, for the sake of conversation, again, just double-checking, uh, then, i- i- this applies to, uh, this planning commission position, uh, but, so we're kinda taking a little bit of license, like, you know, entering in this, but it, but I think it's, I think it's a good idea that we do. So, but this appointment process, yeah, applies to planning commission and boards, is that, is that?
Correct, and, and we, we had a, we had a, a discussion about, there are, I think it's four positions that are required by state law that come to the council.
Staff.
For employee positions, those are the only ones that I were, was ever interested in, and, and I would prefer that the language reflects, we're not talking about any other, not ad hoc committees, not other staff level, like, I'm not trying to get involved in that, and, and I had that conversation with Councilmember Burnham a little bit, and, and it sounded like she was in agreement with that, correct me if I'm speaking out of turn, Councilmember Burnham?
Yes, that's, that's, yeah.
Was that, did anyone else have a different understanding? Okay, and I know we're kind of working through, I don't, I figure, let's strike while the iron's hot and we can talk through some of the things that have been particularly difficult for us to speak about, I, I think, so.
Sure, because, yeah, it has been, for whatever reason, I mean, for lots of reasons, yeah, it's been difficult.
Were there any other particular?
Well, let's see, I mean, I just like, these are kind of random. But, so, that, let's see. On the concept of consent, that's not, the consent is just on the appointment, not on the agenda item. Does that make sense? Like, just, I know this is a way big step back, but it's kind of like, okay, let's start over. That, like, you know, advice and consent isn't to put it on the agenda. It's just on the appointment, right? Okay.
So, like, the idea that if I have a really, really strong opposition against it, you still have every right to put it on.
Right.
Right, absolutely.
However messy that is.
However messy that, no, it's your right. You could, for example, force a vote.
I think that's the advice part.
But Councilmember Curtis gets to tell you that, and then you get to make your decision.
Correct. And I think that that's what we're getting at. And then you have to play the game of, do I have three? You know, does this look bad? Or can I get all five along because it's awkward? Like, you have every right to do that. I'm not saying you're going to, I'm just saying you have every right.
And where this gets really productive, where we can really help each other out, is particularly like when we're looking at character issues, right? That's, I think that's the main focus. So, that's where we definitely need each other's back, right? So, if, you know, you know something I don't, like, then.
Well, I think that's where we've got hung up on the advice part because if we didn't know, if we saw it at the same time and the public saw it, too late.
Right, yeah.
Right, and I think that maybe there's one other thing, like, if for any other reason we don't like it, I imagine we still have the right to tell you that we don't, but you still have the right to move forward with it.
Sure, yes.
Right, that's not.
No one is censored.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Except for maybe Brett. Brett, you might.
You and I both know that's not true. You always have a listening ear for me, and I'm grateful for that.
So, the code that's currently on the webpage, under the posting of positions, it says, "Notice of all empty board positions shall be posted on the city webpage." So, that may, we may want to move out, we may want to just take off the word "empty." You know, notice of all board positions posted on the city webpage, and we're good.
Would that be, I mean, would that be okay to say, here's all our board positions and these ones are currently filled?
It's just, no, it's just a continual thing. Here's all of our board things.
I'll default to staff, I, like, I.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I just didn't want to complicate this by bringing back changes to 2.27 at the same time.
No, no, we're not going to pass that tonight.
No, I understand that. I just feel like if we can kind of come to some sort of pretty much agreement, then.
Yeah, if we can come to agreement, maybe we can bring this back in the next meeting.
Well, and then no one's surprised, and we don't have a lot of things to work through, and, yeah.
And there is another side of this too, because there may be times, whether it's me or somebody else, a mayor says, look, I don't know any of these people. And I've got like twenty of them. Can we divide and conquer on this? So, depending on circumstances and at the, whoever mayor discretion, council members may be invited in, or they may not. I mean, it could go either way. And that's, neither one is impressed.
And I was talking to the mayor of Bluffdale, and I says, how do you guys do this? How do you guys do this? How do you make it work? And she actually works with the liaison to the board to talk to the people and find out who they feel like would both best match with the board. But that's totally up to your discretion.
Yeah, no, and that's.
That's what works best for her.
That sounds like a great idea, too. So, yeah, yeah, depending on circumstances.
Yeah, but there's nothing that's in here or not in here that would say that you have to do that or that you couldn't do that.
Right.
But, again, I think that the posting of positions should be reworded a little bit to match how we do it, which basically says, we have all these volunteer opportunities in the city. If you're interested, throw your hat in the ring, and when one comes up, we'll contact you. That way, people can kind of volunteer on their own timetable and not just when there's an empty position.
And, you know, there's another perspective to that, and I'm sure, you know, many of us can relate to this. Like, certainly, it's more in private sector. When you find somebody really good, you can find a place.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, let's put you over here for now.
Yeah, exactly. Let's work them in.
And there, I mean, there were maybe two quick things that I wanted to, one of the things that you had mentioned to me that I think is reasonable is that maybe we need to have an understanding that you're not always going to talk to all five of us before you throw out a name. And I understand that that could be an issue, especially in a short turnaround.
In a short turnaround, hopefully it's less the case, having longer time.
Right. But that doesn't preclude you from telling us about it beforehand, say, hey, I'm thinking of this person, right? But you're not required to.
Yeah, like, to go into depth.
Does that make sense? Like, a week or two beforehand? He doesn't have to do that, but he certainly could reach out.
It's just the five days. He says, this is.
The minimum is just like, here's the name, here's the application, good luck. Like, that would be the minimum.
Let me know if you.
Now, I hate to even bring this up, but I do want to at least discuss it. And, you know, me being the person to bring it up, I actually think that you're probably going to like what I'm going to say. So, I'm thinking about that five days. So, that would be, we've talked about that being the Thursday, right? From the Thursday?
Yeah, because it's when, it's when the.
Frankly, it usually, it was, really ended up being Finn's problem, really.
Right, and we don't want to create a problem for, like, that wasn't ever the goal. The goal is simply just to get lead time, especially in the character ones where it's like, Mayor, do you realize that there's this thing that none of us knew about that's a problem?
Right, right.
But my question is, would it be beneficial? Because I'm thinking about, what does that mean? So, Wednesday, Tuesday, Monday, Sunday, Saturday? To me, it makes sense.
It could be done on Friday or Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe we, should we get Finn to weigh in on this?
So, I know that this is a.
But you never know because some of our staff members are off on Friday, some of our staff members are off on Monday.
That's true. So, if we made it Monday, then that's still going to be a different. The goal is, I just don't want to find out about it a couple of hours before the agenda drops, right?
It's not less than five days.
Well, because you really can't.
I don't even have time. I'm probably working on a work project, and I may not even have time to call you up or anything like that, right?
Finn, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, Mayor, it's whatever you, Mayor and council wants, we'll make it work.
She's such a trooper.
You can't see my face. No, honestly, at this stage, whatever you put in there, we'll make it work.
What about just cycles? Let's, if you could remove yourself for a moment and just say, look, these are, this cycle makes sense because I know you try to do certain things on certain days and certain cycles, and it's nice if they match up in a way that makes sense with, you know, the things you're doing and the cycles you're in. And so, rather than a totally different timeline.
We start working on the agenda the Monday before the city council meeting. And we, it takes us Monday through Thursday to get everything wrapped up. So, you know, we've had some struggles with timing, and I just think we're going to continue having struggles with timing. And the worst-case scenario is that the appointment has to wait for two more weeks. So, if Mayor and council are okay with that, I just, I don't know that there's a perfect solution for it.
So, thank you for your input. What I was thinking was, to me, I don't know that I feel like there's anything benefited by having five versus three. And I was wondering if it made more sense with the way that this happens, if three would work better logistically.
Shorter is better.
Yeah.
I have a question, and it's normally not like me because I love the conversation, but it's starting to get off of the agenda item, and I'm, but I love it. I'm wondering if in section, I always call it section nineteen, I don't know if that's actually right, but could we continue this in section fifteen as part of an item?
You're absolutely right.
I think we can talk about it. I think we have the opportunity in section fifteen to bring up.
And I, I think you're absolutely right. The only thing I'm trying to get at is, I hope that all of you have learned by now that I try to be a man of my word. So, I want to help agree to certain things because I understand that there is some, maybe some uncomfortable feelings on approving.
And I'm just saying, I think we have.
Not knowing what the appointment could be going to look like.
But I think we have an opportunity to talk about it in the next item.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying, let's deal with that and then continue the conversation.
Yeah, exactly. You're right, I think as far as comfort level.
Right, I think what I was getting at is, if we don't have a comfort level as a body with us on board, and I don't know that we can pass, right, I'm trying to work in good faith so that we can get to something that mostly fits everybody's needs because then hopefully there's enough comfort level to move forward on this. And because I've stated this publicly, I'm not going to go back on my word. Right? And I wouldn't, even if I didn't state it publicly, I'm not, that's generally not what I do. I try to.
You know, if this were a different item, probably what we typically do is say, you know, let's table this and then come back to the other one, do that first, and then we'll come back to this. But we've been bouncing around so much, we're just all anxious to like, can we move on? You know, can we?
And they are hand in hand, but definitely not contingent.
Right, correct.
Right, but since we're pointing the planning commission back to that other code, if that other code is not your favorite thing in the world, which there are members of the body, that's not their favorite thing in the world, if they know that we're trying to get to something that's more amenable to them, maybe that changes the way we feel about this.
I think the mayor's basically stated that, yeah, he'll bring that back and let's get it corrected. And, you know, maybe you and the mayor should work with Jeremy.
If we'd be willing to spend like ten more minutes on this, I think that Jeremy could leave this meeting with a clear direction that we could fix.
I'm fine with ten minutes. I'm just wondering if it's ten minutes during item fourteen or if it's ten minutes during item fifteen.
I think it makes sense because it points to it.
It's 2.27 is the code that you're trying to.
And we won't be making decision on that.
No.
Code, but it is relative.
Is, are there additional, Councilmember Love, are there additional points that you want to make?
And I can be quick.
Okay, is that all right? If she, we allow her to make those?
Okay, 2.27.030, notice to council. It says, noticing the possible appointment of any person, and that should be appointment or reappointment. Okay? And then, we also need to include staff level office, it says right, staff levels offices requiring council consent.
Those are the only ones we want.
Yeah, and that's not in our current code. So, that needs to be added to our current code.
That's the five.
That's the four or five positions required. That's all we're trying to say. I don't know how you want to word it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We're not talking about any other positions.
Jeremy, are you willing to take a stab at it?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Yeah, and.
And Finn, correct me if I'm wrong, do they still, like, is the recorder still require that? I can't remember, did they change the code? I think they changed it.
No, so, the only change in the code is that we had the requirement, it was, it used to be after every election that the appointment was to be brought to the council for the treasurer and the recorder. But that, we got that change, so it's only if I were to leave and there was a new appointment coming in, then it would have to be brought to Mayor and council. It's the mayor's appointment with the advice consent of the council for those two positions.
And do you know if it changed for treasurer, too?
Yeah, yeah, those two positions.
So, only when there's a new appointment does it add to come?
Yes.
And there's no reappointment, there's no terms?
Yeah, there's no terms, so it'd just be.
The office is maintained until there's a replacement.
Okay.
And that's state code, right?
It's two positions, so we'll just put those two positions.
I think there's engineer.
It's the city administrator, the attorney, the engineer, the treasurer, and the recorder.
You're saying the treasurer and recorder are the ones required?
So, there's a difference between the appointment and the, those other ones that you're talking about. So, the contract for the attorney, it's not statutory in our code.
I think it's any employed position that requires council consent is what we're talking about. The difference is statutory, though.
So, the only statutory requirements are for the treasurer and the recorder. However, there's an appointment requirement in our policies for our engineer. And then the contract for our attorney is brought to you because it's contractual. And then also, our city administrator is contractual.
So then, does that satisfy?
I think technically speaking, their contract is kind of a consent anyway, right?
Yes.
So, you're not.
We hope so.
So, then we all.
Well, and I think the goal, like, like, I don't know that there's really all that much problem here. Like, if I see Finn's name on there day of, it's not like I'm going to have a problem with it, you know?
Yeah, but I think the goal in this.
But if it wasn't Finn, you know?
Right, but that would be the new one, right? So, it would require it if it's a new position, correct?
Yeah, if it's a new position, yeah, there are no reappointments. It's just if it's a new position.
Correct.
I think part of the goal of that, what we were all trying to accomplish, that Councilmember Love's pointed out so well, is there are times where a member of our community might be promoted into a position like a city administrator. And we don't want to be put in a position where, when it's somebody that you dearly love and respect, and you have to vote no for that person because of the contract. I didn't, I did, and thankfully, Paul and I have a great relationship, and he understood where I was coming from. But I think part of that's some of the stuff that, we're neighbors. Our daughters were friends and hang out together, and I didn't want to hire her dad, you know? I mean, I don't know. So, I think that's, I did, right? But, sorry, I think that's the point, is that we don't want to be.
Foot in mouth.
No, that's why I use that example, because we're comfortable. And it's, but that's something in the future. There's only the two statutory ones, but the other three that Brett pointed out, you know, we want to be sensitive to the character issues that may be brought up or whatever.
Okay, well, I'm confident that Jeremy can.
I think everyone understands the goal. The goal is, try to tell council with some reasonable amount of time, whatever it is, but we don't want to tie your hands so much that you can't operate. That's really.
Well, and I think too, and maybe this is just obvious, but I'm going to say it anyway, with a little bit of notice, whatever we land on, if that's not enough time, we just say, hey, I want to hold it over till, I don't want it on this agenda, let's save it for the next time because I need more time with this one, or whatever. Hey, one other thing, just to get it out there, it's just, because again, it's just, you know, a wild thought. But on the alternate planning commissioner, it might be wise, in most cases, that when a seat becomes vacated, that the alternate be appointed to fill that seat. But I think we, what I would like to recommend is it's not mandatory.
No, that should be your choice, Mayor.
That's not a given.
And I think honestly, that's the goal, is we've got somebody on deck, like, you know, we've got a batter up on deck who's ready to go. And then.
But it may not always.
But it may not always be the right person, but then you could also find, well, this person looks like they might be a good fit. You try them out as the alternate, they may be awful, you know? And then you let them go their way, you know? And I think that gives flexibility, but at the same time, you have some people to draw off of. And hopefully, that creates comfort, too, because I know that planning commission is important to a lot of us, including you. And if we've got somebody on deck, we've already seen them in action, we, you know, maybe it takes away some of that trepidation that we might have for, ooh, I don't know, do I want to put this person on, you know? I think that that will be helpful.
Okay, cool. I think that's all I had on that.
Can I make one, just one final statement? And it's something that, as I had a conversation with Councilmember Burnham about this today, that I didn't realize that she was unaware of. And I don't know if the other council members are aware of this, but she, Donna, if I say something that's out of line, will you please correct me, even from the Great White North? I don't think that she realized that it was your idea to make sure that this alternate was engaged on the planning commission regularly so that they become a part of that body and feel a need to be there and that they're. so that they become a part of that body and, and feel a need to be there and that they're participants in the process. So I think that's really important to recognize that was your idea and you contributed that. And I think frankly, I think it's one of the, one of the better things that's going to come of this.
Well, I'm, I'm grateful that we had a chance to, council member Wright, that you and I had a chance to work on that because it was, you know, just, you get busy, like, because, you know, when we started to talk, you know, we were able to connect on a lot of points and understand why it hadn't been done. It's just like, I brought it up, I got a little bit of, not pushback, but concerns. And that was enough to like, okay, that's, I'm setting that aside because I don't have time to track those down. But fortunately, gratefully, that you did take that time to track those down and we were able to work through all of that. So, uh, make it happen, yeah. Okay.
I just had one more follow-up question that I just didn't realize. Some, one of you probably knows it, I'm sure it's in there, but does this balance so that we ended up with the 2-2-2?
That's my question. That's what I've been waiting to ask. That was what I've been like.
Well, it did, they did add in here, the original term of the alternate member shall expire on December 31st, 2024.
Yeah, but there's still 2, 3 and a 1. So what I was asking, is it possible to make it 2, 2 and 2?
So Leanne and I had an extensive conversation about this to try to figure this out. And that's why we, you know, after kind of figuring out who's coming up, the terms and who may or may not want to seek relike or reappointment of those, we decided the best thing to do was to allow those terms to be extended based on, you know, the next one to say, okay, we're, you know, we're going to reappoint two or three or however many new people. And at that point, based on who's coming in and what terms they're taking over, then the council could extend one of those terms to.
That's all I was wanting to know is the mechanism to make it line up to 2-2-2. And it might take four to six years to make that happen.
Yeah. So the, the mechanism was basically allow you, when that reappointment happens on the next go around, to figure out the terms at that point and likely appoint someone to a four-year term.
Or somebody, the alternate could be a two-year term with the next term being three years, you know, if that's what lines it, I mean, whatever lines it up.
Yeah, the alternate's landing now on a term where there will be no one currently there. So we figured that was a good one because we could put that in and then the other ones.
Okay.
Okay, so we have.
And we're coming up on the three the next time, correct?
We have, um, two people, that their term expires at the end of this year.
Okay.
So that's already working.
So we won't want to change it this time?
Yes, and then we have. Yeah, and then we have three people that's term expires next year. So what we could do is if, we could reappoint one of them for one year only. And then this new person, their term expires in 2024. So if we take one of those people from 23 and just appoint them for a year, we'd be on it.
And I know what you meant, but the mayor will appoint them for one year and will consent to it, just to be clear.
Yes.
But you altered the code so that it allows us to do that, right?
I'm doing math over here. I don't do English. I do math.
Hey, I just don't want any misunderstandings to happen up here on the roll.
That's the second time in one meeting, huh?
Yeah, it says.
So, so my question, go ahead.
It, it was just a minute, say, the regular members of planning commissioners are, shall serve terms of three years, except the council may adjust the term to provide for the annual appointment or reappointment of at least one member.
Okay, so, so it's already in there and I guess, do we need in a motion or in a directive? How, like, how can we set the wheels in motion to make sure that that's what our goal is and that it happens? Just by stating, please make it a two per year?
Yeah.
In the motion or are we clear right now?
Put it in the city calendar that when those three come up.
Like, how do you want to see it?
Remind somebody that we're going to try to do one, I don't know.
Yeah, I.
That's next year. That's not this year, it's next year, right?
I mean, we know the intent, but I'm saying, do you need anything to?
No, I, I mean, I just don't know. It'd be so hard to try to figure out.
It's just a one-time thing. I think it's a fact.
It's just a one-time thing that I.
So just, just let you guys handle it without saying anything? Just know that's our goal?
Yeah.
Okay, then, then don't even bring it up. You guys know what to do.
It, no, it might be that they come all three and, and we on the fly remember and say, mayor, could we point one of them, you know, one of them to one year and he makes the call?
Uh, I think Leanne or Finn, they're the ones that will remind us. They'll know.
I can add a note into our, we just have our index of our commissioners and the terms. I can add a note that when 2023 comes up, remember to adjust one of these.
Perfect. So that was basically the thing I was trying to accomplish in this code and I'm satisfied.
Okay, sounds like we're about there, huh? Anyone care to make a motion?
Move to approve it with all the nuance we just talked about.
What, what do we, what do we need to change?
I don't think we need to change anything.
Right?
So, and mayor, uh, sorry, there is just one typo in there. I don't know why in the last G, it should say members. I don't know why. That, that was supposed to do just the M.
It's right here. It, they crossed out members and they just need to cross out the E and the R's.
Okay.
State planning commission members.
Yeah, it was supposed, the cross out was supposed to be just to the capital M to start that, but I don't know.
I'll take a stab at it, mayor. I'm going to try and keep it simple.
All right.
Mayor, I move that, uh, that Eaglemont City Council adopt an ordinance. Um, let's see, what item is this on the agenda?
14.
As recorded in item 14A with one change, that the, the spelling or that the word members be reinstated. In item G is recommended by our legal counsel.
Second.
We have a motion from council member Wright, a second from council member Curtis. Would anyone like any clarification or discussion on that motion?
I, actually, sorry, this might be too late. You can skin me. There was some, did we already cover the planning commission recommendations? There was two. That's all, that's covered in the code, right? Got it. We're good. Just making sure they weren't separate.
Leanne's good. Finn's good, right?
Give a wave or a thumbs up.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Uh, let's go to a vote then. Oh, I think it's your turn, council member Curtis. Let's start with you.
Yes.
Council member Burnham.
Yes.
Council member Gray.
Yes.
Council member Wright.
Yes.
Council member Love.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Okay, let's go to, uh, business and then we'll do liaison reports. Anybody have any business?
Yeah, mayor, we're looking for an appointment to the, uh, planning commission alternate.
Have you got one in mind yet?
I was actually going to re, I was just going to say, I, I don't have anybody, but, and I don't know if you're open or if we have anyone in the works already, but I'm sure that people would be willing to throw, if you so choose.
I haven't spoke to, there was three names last time. One of them was my neighbor that you had interviewed.
Yes.
And I haven't talked to him since, but.
I maybe talked to him once since then, but yeah, I, I need.
That was, that was somebody, there was some applications in the past that I think are still brewing, just so that you.
I think right now, just without review, I, I, I know we have three or four people that have either personally requested or officially applied. So we'll make sure all of them officially apply. If you have any one that you think might be, uh, you know, a good candidate, certainly have them, have them apply.
In fact, there's two people from my neighborhood now that I remember that had applied. One was my neighbor and one was Brett's neighbor.
Mayor, I'm just going to look forward to you bringing us forward an appointment. I'm going to say that.
No, my only reason for doing it was actually if you felt you needed people to send some names your way. That's all I was saying.
Certainly welcome. I don't think we're in a bind for anybody, but certainly, yeah, names are welcome, for sure. So, uh, yeah. Because, yeah, at, at least, so I haven't gone into in-depth interviews kind of thing, but there's been kind of a conversation.
Since you've had about two and a half minutes to consider this at this point.
Well, I'm glad we're keeping things moving. Yeah.
That's all I got.
Any other business? No? Okay, let's.
Are we doing liaison too? Are you going to do this separate?
Yeah, well, we're doing separate, so let's, oh, coun, council member Burnham, do you have any business?
I don't.
Okay. Let's go to liaison then. Can we just start back down at the end again, council member Gray?
Yes, and because it's July, I haven't met with anybody and I'm trying to think what, uh, I know there's a few things that we need. But I think we're good.
Okay. Council member Wright?
Uh, the Parks and Rec, um, board members did meet this last week and they've, uh, kind of adopted some language or some questions that they want to, to kind of ask at, uh, as citizen engagement to just gauge, uh, where the citizens are at with regard to sports and recreation within the city. And their intent is to do that from now until August 11th and to kind of prepare a, a little report. One of the venues that they've selected to do that is at the laser light show during that day. So if you're approached as a citizen by, uh, someone you don't know and they introduce themselves as a member of the Parks and Rec Board, please just give them your honest feedback.
Give them information. It's not stranger danger.
Yeah.
So is it fair to ask kind of the, what the explorer, the scope of the exploration is?
Very, it's very limited. They're just trying to kind of ascertain what level of understanding and knowledge is there among our citizenry about the actual, uh, sports opportunities that exist in the city? I mean, there's 20 or 30 sports that we offer. I don't even know the number, but there's a lot more that are available than I think most of our citizens recognize and understand. And then just to gauge, um, the satisfaction, level of satisfaction with those who are participating in the youth or adult sports, so.
I guess part of the reason I asked is, uh, and, and I don't, I'm not trying to lead this, uh, at all, to say like, oh, this is, you know, something I want to see happen necessarily. But it seems there's a growing opinion, uh, that, that is different than it used to be, that maybe there might be an appetite for, you know, less competitive, non-competitive sports, at least during the summer perhaps, I don't even know. So I, I was just kind of curious if it was.
Those are kind of questions that they're kind of asking and trying to ascertain is, is whether, and, and frankly, whether, uh, I have to be careful where I step.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I certainly don't want to steal any of the thunder, but they're, they're, they're really just looking at, um, what is the satisfaction level among our citizens regarding the sports programs that are available?
Okay.
And, uh, more than that, we'll just wait to hear from them.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. I, my curious, curiosity was just piqued. Yeah, so, anyway, okay. Council member Love?
Yes, we also had a meeting with the Legion. Um, they are planning another blood drive on September 2nd. So kind of be looking for that. Um, there was also some interest in having, um, the ability to retire flags out in this area where they get beat up with the wind. Um, the Legion sponsors a, um, a Boy Scout troop. Um, and I also think a Cub Scout troop, if I'm getting that right. And I think they would be, um, the perfect organization to help with this. So they are trying to work through the details with that. And one of the things that might be helpful, I'm just going to throw it out there, is if, uh, is actually a place to have the fire. So if anyone has any ideas after this meeting, it would be, um, great to get those.
Could it be, uh, done at the rodeo grounds? Would that be a appropriate place to do that? It, it, it seems like, like, oh, this might be a cool place to do it, but I, I don't know.
Just have to look at the resources, I guess, and see, but yeah, I don't know why not, as far as my perspective.
I mean, it certainly seems safe enough, right? And there's facilities there, uh.
How many people?
It's, it, in the past, it's been a very small troop-only kind of affair. And I don't know that they're thinking about going crazy with it, but it, it may depend on how many people want to bring flags in to have retired. And, and how many people that they want.
But not all at one time, right?
You can't, you can retire multiple flags.
No, I mean, like as far as facilities and the things, and, and then we obviously want to talk to, we spoke about this a little bit a couple of weeks ago, right?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, council member Burnham.
Yeah, council member Burnham brought it up that people would like the ability to do that and so we could.
As long as we had the proper oversight.
Yeah, we could get you involved.
I don't know why that's.
Probably information too, because I recently found out, I guess you're not supposed to do that with vinyl flags.
Right.
It's only supposed to be the fabric ones because of like toxins and.
Well, it's, it's not, it's noxious fumes, yeah. So, um, yeah, so we, this was part of our discussion. So I just want to kind of throw it out there that that's something that we're thinking about and that might be a really good idea.
Yeah.
So, but they're thinking about doing it sometime in September. So we've got a little bit of time to figure out the logistics and then we can announce it in August.
Very good. See, council member Curtis, did we already go to you?
I gave it in the business, so I was out of, I was out of order.
Okay, all right, fine. Okay, let's go to council member Burnham then.
Um, the only business I have is, um, that the chamber is, um, working through some different, um, sign locations and we may get a proposal from, um, them. I think that actually comes through staff. I'm, I'm trying to remember what the code is, but anyway, that, that may come as, as something that, that they're looking at doing. But anyway, they're doing great. They're growing by leaps and bounds.
Great.
Um, it's, it's, it's actually really exciting. If you, if you like them on Facebook, you'll see, it seems like every week they add three or four new, new members. So it's pretty exciting.
Nice, nice. Um, I don't know if I should mention this. I'm just curious, council member Burnham, have you and council member Gray or anyone from Puny Express Events had a chance to, uh, explore additional lighting out there yet?
No, not yet. Um, I'm thinking I probably need to, to, to meet with Brad to, because I don't even know what we're looking at in terms of prices and things like that. Um, but yeah.
Okay.
And one of the, one of the things, and one of the things that we've talked about, council member Burnham and I and Brad, is, and most of the council, the facilities plan, you know, we're trying to make sure before we spend too much money that, you know, that we're working on the, that's the final resting place and that, things like that. So I think that's why. But then, and there was a, a few other things that we talked about, you know, panels wise and some other improvements that, pretty insignificant.
I, I was just thinking, either way, it might be nice to know, like even ballpark costs, uh, if, if, if we can do that, then, you know, if it's not too pricey, maybe it doesn't sway us. Uh, I, who knows with, I don't know.
I know in my conversation with Brad, and, and I'm not sure what council member Burnham said, I mean, it's pretty similar to Corey Ride Park. And we know what that costs.
Yeah.
So I think that's a.
Okay, well, that's.
Probably not the, because they did that in two phases, right? Not the pickleball side, but the baseball.
Oh.
Right?
Like baseball lights?
Yeah, I think when we did the baseball lights, it was probably a couple of years ago, and we've more recently done the.
Been a few years ago, yeah. Yeah, no, see, I, I didn't even, like, when you first brought it up to me, I, I, yeah, I probably would have pictured something more like a pickleball light, rather than a baseball light, but I, see, this is just.
25 rows worth of bleachers. Pickleballs are like 10 feet.
Yeah, well, I, I just, for some reason I had in my, in my head, it was mostly that, uh, prep area. I, I forget what you call it, that, that you were looking at.
The back fence?
Brad has raised his hand.
Yeah, the, um, well, even that just depends. I thought you were talking about the staging area for like, uh, like the warm-up area.
Yeah, and that area would, the, it would be all encompassed. So I think, it looks like Brad's got it on that.
Yeah, Brad, Brad, do, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I can quickly just say that, um, when we designed the last, the phase two of the Corey Ride in Moria Park with the festival field, we had that lighting component for the festival field area that we, um, were kind of honing in on. And an area that was that size, I think it was like six poles that would have been about 70 feet tall. And it was, uh, about a number around $250,000, I think, for those lighting, that lighting. So, um, there'd be a little bit more for like some underground and stuff like that. But I'm thinking that that footprint's probably going to be a good footprint to measure, like the rodeo arena, to get them what they need. So, but I'm willing to have that conversation, um, with council member Burnham or whoever, so.
Okay, cool. Thank you for that. That, that's very helpful. Uh, okay, I, I just have one thing to add. Let me, I received an email from Jeff Ruth. I think it was an email. one thing to add, let me, I received an email from Jeff Ruth, I think it was an email, or maybe it was, oh no, I hope I can find it, darn it, maybe it's a text, yes, oh, it was a text, okay, good, 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 okay, there's several ears that will want to hear this, so I'm just gonna read it, so this is from Jeff Ruth, and, I'm just gonna read what it says, hopefully this all makes sense, I asked Dan about what, what you and Tony think of this, okay, forward, so, does American Legion usually put the flags on the graves at the cemetery, so he's, he's quoting now, I wonder if it might be a good idea to have a group put flags up for 9/11, is that too much, or I was thinking of talking to Principal Bakar about doing the remembrance field, a field of flags, I wonder if the American Legion and Boy Scouts would be able to help with that, I haven't talked to him yet, but I wonder what your thoughts are about this, so, what I gather from this is, they'd like to, if I'm understanding correctly, they'd like to, to either put out flags, of the cemetery, some kind of field of flags for a 9/11 memorial thing, and so certainly, if it's a cemetery, there'd be cemetery board stuff, so, anyway, I just wanted to read that, get it to the appropriate, so.
I, I know that the Legion struggled a little bit with just getting the funds together to purchase the small flags that they put on the graves for Memorial Day, when, when I've seen a field of flags for September 11th, it's usually been full-size flag.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
I don't know if we have access, and I don't know how many it usually is, I don't know if there's a number that it usually is, and, and if we have access to that many flags.
Right, so, he did leave, he did send me a contact number, so, we can call those people and get from, more information, and then have them work together with the cemetery board, or perhaps the principal, and see, see if it's a, something that's viable or not, or, or what it takes to get there, so, I just wanted to get it out there, so everyone's aware, so, I think that's all that I have for the time being, so, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from councilmember Gray, a second from councilmember Curtis, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is 9:35, and we are adjourned, thank you very much.